Yeah.
Can you please unmute? Can you please mute, please? Can you mute, please?
Women and Politics. Women have been abused, marginalized, and their human rights been violated in our political spectrum. And this has been a trending issue on the role women play in politics. It is against this backdrop that the iconic Tell It To Rachel talk show platform brings you Women and Politics. Women and Politics is the all-new social media reality talk show that will propagate the very notable and desirable women of Sierra Leone to tell the whole story behind the stories in the political arena. Women and Politics. Hosted by Rachel Bungura Davis. Women and Politics.
Elections don't come back home, the Kabudu don't rap back. Inside a Kabudu day, the good one ain't there and the bad one ain't back there.
And we all know how we consider on the now. If it's sweet, our. If it's sour, you sappy. Now you wondering if you dey eat bed full or you go sleep on. You where where you soos, now you go know if you dey bother.
We the people then, they ain't get for help us safe now. If we vote for good leader, we left love for the country and the people of Saloon. We all go better. If we vote man, we can't for can't take cake. Well, he left soon, now we get for sleep on.
I never vote na me life, I go ibam this term, I sweat so me life. If I no ever vote na me life, I go vote this term, I sweat so me life. Rand cap politician, oh they can ruin me life. Saloon too sweet, so I enjoy me life. I am feed and oh they can ruin me life. Saloon too sweet, so I enjoy me life. Me voting na me life, me voting na me life. Say me want green vote for two tapa. Me voting na me life, me voting na me life. Say me want green vote for one bad dress. Me voting na me life, me voting na me life. Say because we born a makin', eh eh. Me voting na me life, me voting na me life. Say because we born a kene ma.
Awonni melatulafi mama kiha sepa.
So we go make weyeri.
Machi ma gontone and doga siwa on tumota.
Sali people meyere.
Feera solu saze mpa monte baka pa. Mwate nne sakala. So na tava suka korri, ntsikma nikita.
So we go make weyeri.
Kela ka bende ama kiye, etalo from mepe dokam. Ude kevire ma keta ma timba. Mi nen, munang. Awamitame, mutame, konteme. Sata meza teme. So sesula gama tebriska ma keta ma timba. Awainnemteme mamucho sesula gama kichika.
Me voting na me life, me voting na me life. Say me want green vote for two tapa. Me voting na me life, me voting na me life. Say me want green vote for one bad dress. Me voting na me life, me voting na me life. Say because we born a makin', eh eh. Me voting na me life, me voting na me life. Say because we born a kene ma. We once we changes from the grass to the roots. With manifestos, make a plans for the youth. We tire with the lies, now we stand for the truth. We need check, we go change the taste of the soup. Why? We send rich for shapes and chefs and a shabi for go rally. Then go member we. After election, men take power, give it part them. Where we talk, they pademba we. Then go give we bit a color for go campaign. Where they win them and their family pop champagne. We no go fret for no politician again. This time we go learn, we no want type campaign. Mind box side diamond, now we learn. For pre-fif, papa no get dime na eh hand. We want more youth, a woman dena power. Parliament, cabinet, mama mi na power. Me voting na me life, me voting na me life. Say me want green vote for two tapa. Me voting na me life, me voting na me life. Say me want green vote for one bad dress.
Ni manya muinmuka ma mo nyonyo. Se niya penga mule ma goma eh. Ina mileka muka nyane velyama. Jimmya kwe mo malama eh. Onenle ba ya si nyama o. Yifamo ambe bo bo ike ye ye. Ye na we amon be na fire. Mule ma go ma kwele ma eh. Wakanya na vi kobe. Ogbole juhu amare. Ye 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 eh we ni kobe. Na biya nyane, da mukwe mo kla. Da wheba eh kenyehu wo yo. Dwea yagrama, agramo kelo eh. Amo kwe kenyehu na yuma, mulo kolonu ma ogbo la ba se.
If I no ever vote na me life, I go ibam this term, I sweat so me life. If I no ever vote na me life, I go vote this term, I sweat so me life. Rand cap politician, oh they can ruin me life. Saloon too sweet, so I enjoy me life. I am feed and oh they can ruin me life. Saloon too sweet, so I enjoy me life. Me voting na me life, me voting na me life. Say me want green vote for two tapa. Me voting na me life, me voting na me life. Say me want green vote for one bad dress. Me voting na me life, me voting na me life. Say because we born a makin', eh eh. Me voting na me life, me voting na me life. Say because we born a kene ma.
Stop! What you feel say you do? Now ya you dey can wet? Baby ma make a you? You don't know sign for wet?
What? Sign no dey for wet, toilets no dey.
Paddy, I know the night say the toilet are no do. But you no go can wet in middle the streets. You no go can wet front people shop. You no go can wet who side the team get for run from people, they outside they get for water. I know say toilet no dey, but I beg go beg to neighbor force. We dey from build toilet and feature to the council. We no say we get for solve the problem. How you look on?
At two man, at two anyway, I wait for only wet and go fence side, descent for wet.
Okay, thank you. Because together, we go transform Free Town. I glad you don't getting brand ambassadors there. Because they get for help me for tell una all, we all. Wait let it back back to the way can happen, where would if Dotina Street?
Where you to away Dotina Street? He plays the smell, eh you no go one for can I smell di?
Eh yeah, look where you find for watch. But if you to away Dotina Street, the place they look wo wo, the place where they find for look.
Family, left for to away Dotina Street. If you fasting for to away Dotina Street, you nearly ever done with dissent. You no go one for sicko.
If you to away Dotina Street, mask it up, bet you and you go get mad area.
Where you to away Dotina Street? All they got are in the block, and it cause flooding.
Not to away Dotina Street, together, we go transform.
Me my Ivan Aki Sawyer. And 11th May 2021, make me three years where I don't there in office. I say, let I come and tell Freetonians them. Una boku boku tenki, for where una elect me. Everyone ah give me this mandate for serve una. But I not just want tell una tenki for when I elect me. I want tell una tenki for when I don't walk with me. And walk with the councillors, walk with the staff of Freetown City Council. Walk with so many stakeholders, including the central government, the international partners, the local partners. I want for tell una, the Freetonians, and thank you. But I want for tell all the other groups and the boku boku tenki. Together, we embark on a journey for transform Free Town. And nobody not be say it go easy. We published the plan in January 2019. And then in January 2020, we published we first year report. And then in January 2021, we don't publish we two year report. Inside the reports and they, you go able for read in much more detail. Wait and wait till we don't achieve. But family them, I still I just share today, some of the things that way they make me heart glad. Pan this walk here. One thing I really, really glad about. Now the wastewater treatment plant, where we don't build, Nakington. This is not the first time ever in the history of Saloon. For let we get, dentine where we come on a be toilet. Instead of it just gonna grow Nakington, it actually they go into a plant. Way then get for separate the solid from the liquid and get for treat them. And waiting there for komot, can go towards manual. They can now be safely, the liquid can now safely be disposed into the waterways. Another practical thing we are so glad for, that this urban farming project. We bring over 300, in fact, we start with 300. Now we add another 200 women them. We now na them backyard them, and at in community level, particularly then deprived communities.
Are they can create this? Where you get? The okwa they come up. Eh they will plant that.
There women then they do farming projects, where go benefit them, then picking them. For get more nutritious food, but you go also help them for get small thing at the hand, as in selling to the dinner market. And then, that nursery school. Family then go no say we been not open the one that Congo Water Market. For make vulnerable women them, and they young picking eh under the age of five. Get free quality preschool care. And now we dey from build the second one. We dey do refurbishment upstairs Nakutu Road Market. And that facility could be open and available to women and men traders inside Kuta Road Market. Tricycles. Well then tricycle and they, not only then they help for keep we city clean. They also they create employment. We don't create so far over 1,200 jobs with young people then where they go and collect dotty, that is streets. And now we get 90 more where they come on stream. So, I so happy, because it increase the capacity for collect dotty. At the same time, it increase the number of people them, young people that we get work. Let I not talk, I not talk about the transfer station. When I dey the dotty then they go. So we don't get four additional ones, including the one that Lumley, the one that approve school. The one that Shell, and the one that Allen Tong. Bella woman them, then they all over we community. That journey for going to PCMH, it can challenge baku of them. So we dey work for upgrade, five of we page use them, for make them be monk. Side who side Bella Woman, the able for bond. Free Town people then, boku boku people then no say, dog na challenge that is city. And so we don't start a program for sterilize, vaccinate the dogs them. So that we go get control over dogs and where they unbug motaman, but where they unbug themselves. Where go make we city healthier, and you go reduce the risk for let people then get us sick with and call rabies. I don't share small about wait eh wait eh we don't they do. And over these three years, but I just touch, the team in Baku. I go say, anybody want for no more? Also go now with Facebook page. We get Free Town City Council Facebook page. We also get Ivan Aki Sawyer, Mayor of Free Town. You go able for follow we. Let we continue for work together with all we stakeholders. For let collectively, we transform Free Town. Una, thank you and God bless you.
Hello, family there. Una cover, I want for say welcome, welcome. If you're just joining in, please share the video. Welcome to the Tell It To Rachel talk show on the program Women and Politics. And today we get a special program, win a town hall meeting for the mayor of Free Town, Ivan Aki Sawyer OBE. We all know, we don't see na social media, we don't hear eh a lot about, you know, the controversy where we surround the mayor of Free Town. So today, now the opportunity for let can talk to Freetonians them, both home and abroad. And the general Saraleonians, they where they watch, and the one they will get for watch before later. Not forget say this program is being broadcast live on Star TV, Sierra Leone. So now it is Sierra Leone, we not getting opportunity for watch, or getting opportunity for going on Facebook. When I go watch them live on Star TV. Welcome again, everybody, I want for welcome on all, on the Zoom, on the town hall meeting. And mayor, I want for welcome you. Welcome to Women and Politics.
Thank you so much, Rachel. Pleasure, pleasure for dinner here, and good evening to everyone.
Okay.
Good evening, mayor.
Good evening, mayor.
Alright, I want for make when I no say, we at the council, you know, have a talk with the mayor. Then after that, we go go to question and answer session. If we have time, it depends on the time we left, how many people that will, you know, take for the question and answer session. Like I said, when that time reach, if you want for say anything or ask the mayor, anything, you can put the unsigned body up. And we can take you question and address onto the mail. So once again, thank you. If you're just joining in, please share the video. Mayor, once again, I want for welcome you us, we dey go straight to the program. I had, and I'd ask everybody for mute, please, can you just mute your, your devices where you to use? Please can you just mute? The only person that will be on mute at this point is the mayor. Please, please. Alright, thank you. Mayor, maybe we just go straight to people into Saloon people, and the one with it, the one that within at the virtual town hall. And the one they also where they watch you from home and also on the diaspora or right now, not the, not Facebook. I want for encourage you now all, when I send you a comment, when I share this video as the mayor of Free Town. On the platform now, and we dey can talk plenty, plenty things then. The team that we don't do, the challenges them, and what's in at the way forward, what's in at the plan, the boku boku plan we gets for Saloon. Mayor, let us, now we start with, how we look like? You know, for the past three years, you know, I play couple of videos there, where they show things that we don't do. Where they show the, you know, the plenty, plenty things that we don't do for Freetonians there. But I want for make you tell family them, how it look like for you, for the past three years? Where since they elect you as mayor of Free Town, how would the work look like for you?
Um, hmm, well, I go see, and I can always see. Not a privilege, absolute privilege for, for serve. It's an absolute privilege for serve. Or, um, I suppose I would like to come a different way, Rachel. I want to come first of all, on the professional way, but then I also want for acknowledge, because this is a program. I want acknowledge, I'm also a wife and a mother. And so I want for just also touch on the personal. So, from the professional, I go, I mean, just try for get hold of.
I didn't listen to the mayor.
Okay, I'm, I'm all done mayor. This is what we get when we are having a situation like this. Please, and Claudia, can you please put your, put your device on mute, please? Let me look, kind of look for you, I can do it. Myself, okay. Claudia, can you mute your device, please? Alright, I'm sorry, mayor, this, you know what I mean, this is what we get when.
Sorry to interrupt, yeah, go on. No problem. So Rachel, I just been to say, you asked the question, what's it, what's it been like? And I wanted to answer the question from a couple of perspectives. So on a professional level, I make a decision some four years ago, because the decision was pre the election. That I wanted to serve, I wanted to continue a history of being engaged in my, in my country. Of giving to Sierra Leone, whether now the war or Ebola. And through that process, through private sector and then coming on to being the mayor. You know, I made that decision, so I came into this knowing that this was my heart. I've been really, really gratified. It's been amazing to see what can be done in a fairly short space of time. So, you just go through the video. We focus on the, the last year really. But whether we talk about, you know, some of the things where the video shows, such as the nurseries, the fecal waste management. The feces lodge management plant, whether it's Free Town, the tree town, whether it's cleaning the city. Whether it's building systems like Find Me In Free Town, the hotline 8244. Whether it's doing digital learning, with in partnership with other organizations for adult, adult literacy. You know, right across the board, building drainage, where so we no get drainage before. Flood mitigation for reduce flooding, so many things. For me, the last three years has shown me what the potential is. And that has been gratifying for see Freetonians, for see stakeholders, for see private sector and the public sector. And international organizations come aboard and get excited about transform Free Town. It's been, it's been really, really, really encouraging. It's been encouraging, it's been fulfilling. As we say, woman in politics, it also don't mean being away from my family, my husband and my kids. And that don't be, you know, challenging, working long hours. But all in all, wait see I go say is, I have not a moment of regret. I totally, totally, totally stick by my decision, gladly say I do am. But also recognize say, I don't able for achieve. Waiting has been achieving, not by working by myself, but by working with so many other people. So, constant thank yous. But in summary, yes, it's been, it's been a good journey. Challenging, absolutely challenging, but a good journey.
Exactly, we go come to that, we go come to that challenge, and I no say, I mean, you have a lot of success stories and for tell. We all eh for tell Saloon people eh. But for less something successful, I mean, it's not easy. We all get a, like you say generally, success doesn't comes easy, you know, or good things doesn't come easy. So we know all of that. So I want for low we go, now we talk about the controversy, the challenges that you just mentioned. Because we cannot talk about mayor and, you know, leave all of those without talking about all of those things. And there are a lot of controversies, since you, you know, you, you were got, you got elected as a mayor. A lot of things that don't come, you know, and go the come and go, it's been a lot, you know, you've been on the media constantly. So, um, let's talk about the, the operations, the operations of the council. Where don't be a focus for, for the past three years. How italic with you and the chief administrator from the beginning? Because we know, so we all know say, there is a problem, of whether it's personal, or it's, I mean, it's a, on a professional level. But we all can testify, say, there is an issue. But this problem with the chief administrator, or, or is it not that from now, or it don't start from where they elect you?
I might think say, you know, I, I want for put this, depersonalize it. And come back to the fact that I, I make a decision for serve. And I guess, you know, that in itself is, could used to represent a difference. Family, left your career opportunities, left, you know, other things you could be doing. Because you get a burden and a passion for see change. And I go say, Rachel, anybody wait down, take a moment. Or look at what I've done. Go no say, this is a continuation of a pattern. People who've played a role in that, including someone like Mrs. Mary Morgan, who when she was with Chastel and even after. But, you know, that sort of heart, you move on then, Ebola happen. You know, nobody no say, Ivan Aki Sawyer, go fret Ebola or go get involved. But I did, because that's my heart, that's the burden. And so, as some people can say, now so God make me. I can ask God say, why do I love Sierra Leone so much? Why am I so committed to this country? But it's who I am, so I live with it. So now so at Canada Council with that heart, but also with some 30 years of experience in the private sector. I have a degree in economics, a masters in international relations, and I'm a chartered accountant. I've worked in this consulting. I only they say this for say, I've got a background, we don't see me work at very senior levels in different parts of the world. And I can always see Saraleonians, so many people on this call are in the diaspora. We give what we get to other countries. And for me, this I saw and felt, there was not just an opportunity, but a need. For bring, waiting me get us me on competencies, for address some of the pressing challenges. So I just to say that, Rachel, forgive a context of how it was. An account of council with values of accountability and integrity and transparency. Which, you know, again, anyone looking at my life, my experience, my recommendations, some other organizations. Go no say, na that na me. So, it's meant, not so just about council, but if you dey salon, or if you dey engage a salon, they can talk this tear, like you say. So and so this year, like in real case, like you say, city council deep. Well, I don't have to understand, say, this deep, I don't begin if I understand a little bit more what you mean. And I didn't have a challenge. Me go say, this deep, where people linking the talk, just means that in the institution. Things then don't be designed in order for there to be a lack of systems and processes. A lack of transparency. In a daily, deep. More, because you think of the sea. Like when you go deep in the sea, you're not able to see where you go on. You know, the waters like murky and dark. So when I give say, this place are deep, I don't understand something about them. Maybe I reject that wholeheartedly, and that is that. So I would say, and I don't want to dwell on this, Rachel, I really hope say to this you want for the focus on, because I think.
No, 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 but, but, but. There are certain things, there are certain things, Madam Mayor, that you need to clear, you need to clear.
Okay, sure.
We not dwell on that, but there are certain things that you need to clear, because some of the things then. And these are one of the reason why lead for you to be invited to the ACC. So these are the things that you need to clear. Or, or Saraleonians, and we're getting opportunity eh for yery from you, both in the diaspora and Free Town.
Okay, so wait see I go do, I goes talk in general terms, because I really, you know, in spite of all that's going on. I really not comfortable with the constant finger pointing, I don't think say healthy. But I will, as you said, clarify the issues. So there've been issues of accountability, there've been issues of transparency. So for example, we never get any asset register, not a council. Nobody, there was no one place that said council owns this property, this land, nothing. You know, and when you don't have those systems, it means it's easy for pass degree, eh we say, oh, this person, they're not sign. I mean, Rachel, as recently as two days ago. A resident of Free Town came to my office, showed me a document. And as soon as I saw it, I said this is a forgery. On Free Town City Council letterhead, dated 2014. So there's so many challenges with accountability. We also have challenges with performance. And this comes on the fact that, in spite of numerous efforts and attempts and offers to assist. We still do not have a performance management system at all. So people come and people go, we no get job descriptions for over 50%. Oh, no, just about 50%, 40 to 50% of the staff. And every effort to try and pin these things down. So for people where they work in institutions, work in management, you know that the best thing you can do to ensure that you've got performance and, and you have efficiency in the organization. And if I ensure say, everybody knows in that end job. If you notice in that new job, and you reset a target every year, then you can be held accountable for what you deliver. In the absence of that, you have the tendency for things that not for go well. then you can be held accountable for what you deliver. In the absence of that, you have the tendency for things that not for go well. And then you have things like, you know, a refusal to use work with email in twenty twenty one, twenty twenty, you know, which means that you can deliberately say, I don't know about things, because you're not engaging with things. But I think most significantly, in terms of the specific challenge whether you raise, I'm gonna bring it back to a desire to see improvement. I'm committed to transform Freetown. I'm committed to working twenty four seven, you know, seven days a week, doing what it takes. Um, but if you have a situation where there is a lack of interest, um, the interest is about money, frankly. You know, and I, I, I'll be blunt and say that, you know, the, the, the general clash is one around somebody wanting money. Um, we not to that me can a council for, I can a council for change lives by transforming Freetown. It's complicated further, because what I've seen now, let's give this example of the things that have not been done. So the non-payment of the tricycle sweepers.
Yeah, I, 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 I'm, I'm getting there, but, but, but you were saying something very interesting, yeah. Say, before you can at the council, a lot of things that they will be missing. A lot of structural things, uh, operational, the, uh, you know, the whole administration of the council was not in place. And you came um, um, for the past three years, you've been able to put most of them things here, what you mentioned, you be able to structure them things here and put them in place. And we all know say sometimes, most times in salon way, within a job, you know, now so we be, now so you meet on, I out there, now so we the do. You know, we all have this thing, now so we be the do, and nobody wants to move or shift from that comfort zone to, to, to do things the right way. So you, basically, you were saying you don't meet, you be, you meet a situation we are in, now so we be the do. And you want for can change them. So that is where I begin to have the controversy. Am I correct, mayor?
You're correct. And Rachel, I will give you a good example of that, because you, you don't, you don't hit the head on the, the nail on the head. Let's take the property rate, where really has been the source of a lot of the aggravation. Because up until that point, yes, you know, you, bringing an asset register, trying to get a human resource review, it take three years. And in the end, somebody had to volunteer, they did it pro bono, because they saw how frustrated I was with the fact that I was, things are being kicked from pillar to post, year after year, and we don't make any progress with just even assessing the status of we, human resource. But let me come back to the property rate. So I come in twenty eighteen. And um, you know, we are, um, you know, those in the diaspora and those we for the look we say with different, yeah, I don't buy that. I actually work with amazing people in Sierra Leone who have always been in Sierra Leone. And I've also worked with people who are from the diaspora who have less than amazing. So you know, I just think Sierra Leoneans are Sierra Leoneans, and it's more about your heart to serve and your commitment to what you do, your dedication and sense of responsibility. Okay, so I just want to say that because I, um, I know see one of the narratives is that this kind of like, oh, I've actually heard people say, it look down on we, no, that's not true whatsoever. There, there's, there is no looking down on someone, wanting to institute change and bring advancements, bring digitalization does not mean one is looking down on anyone. I come in twenty eighteen and the property rate system, and for those in the UK, you know, look, now think of your, your council tax. You would go to your local council and there'd be a database with everybody in property. And the calculations would be done and your, your local tax bill would go out. Well, I can't meet everything in a book, a physical ledger, where people then you write in by hand. Um, and there were only thirty thousand properties in that domestic properties. And we know that this is a city of one point two million, some people say one point five million, but you know, we'll, we'll keep checking that. Um, because I know there's some work going on to just do that, uh, um, with I O M to just reach, check the, the, the numbers in the city. So clearly, if it's manual, um, there are all sorts of challenges. The very first obvious one, that in fact, say, you're not comprehensive, because we know you're missing properties. But it goes beyond that. How you analyze data? We, everybody talks about big data now, you know, data mining. How do you analyze data with Emmanuel? Um, and then the mill rate, the, the, the rate at which the property, the system was being used to calculate the property rate hadn't been updated in twenty years. So Baku people can say, like today, I got a, a text message from someone saying, um, please can you go and have a look at this particular school? It's in such bad condition, it needs this, this, this doing to it. Well, whether it's that school or it's fixing the cemeteries to do the work, you need the money. So that's why the property rate is so important, because it, 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 um, accounts for sixty five percent of the revenue of council. So what's I do? Part of transform Freetown was looking at these targets. We set the target for increased revenue by fivefold, because we knew that if we just increase the, the universe, we captured all the properties, if we digitize the system. And if we moved from a very archaic system of measuring with a tape measure um, and just doing it by area irrespective of the property, um, other features. If we move to a point system, which is similar to what you have in most parts of the world, we would significantly increase revenue. But that system also meant that the payments would be made at the bank. There would be no cash in hand, there would be no bailiffs going around. Um, and there would be audit trails of every property. There would be a tracker of all the amounts coming in. And I think when I look back, this is probably, in terms of that change and resistance to change, which is not an unknown phenomena, everywhere in the world, in big institutions and small institutions, who's like ever you come and you say, I'm gonna change the status quo, I'm going to change things, you often meet resistance. I guess what I had in the paper was the extent of the resistance.
You don't begin to bring certain points where we don't begin, at least Sierra Leoneans don't begin to see who's side issue day. Because you don't pull, but people le morts, you know, because you know, they know that cash will be the calm that had cash will be the common that the council as useful be, it's no more. You know, like you said, people are paying in, in, in the banks and everything, you don't try for really bring, and when I can say they bring overseas inside some load. And people are not comfortable with that, because we are not used to accountability, to account for certain things. So we understand where your problem is coming from.
So the first thing, I want, I want, no, I want just touch on this for a second, because the other thing where you need for realize is that we, we, we calculated that we'd be able to move from collecting about seven billion a year on property rates to forty five billion. We go give the council a huge advantage in terms of us being able to, without having to, you know, when I first come, when I've been hearing me, oh, government not make the, the, they're not pay this intervention. If they're paid and not paid now, if you have that sort of resource, you will do the cemeteries. You will build uh, um, gutters, you will do what you need to do without having to worry every month, can we pay salaries? You will be able to deliver the services that people want. So that says not an issue. And we see say last year, I was stopped from using the system. First we then say COVID, and then it became no guidelines. Then it was, we done the guidelines, okay, guidelines have to go to parliament. And then by February, guidelines still have to go to parliament, nine months later, okay, there you go, go ahead and use it. But the minute they say go ahead and use it, the, 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 the challenge moved from outside, which was you're not allowed to do it, a government decree to inside. So I have so many letters, emails, um, phone calls, WhatsApp messages of people saying, well, mayor, they try for pay me property rate, I can't at the council, then they dread me. Then they tell me say the system they don't, or then they tell me say, in fact, I've had people who've actually said, reported to me that they were asked, why you fasting for pay this year? So nobody know they chase you. Uh, and there's a, there's a narrative that is, is going around, particularly at this point in time, um, that the system has failed. Now nonsense, it's failed. We need to go back to the old. Um, and this is something that is not unconnected to the current drama in council. Uh, it's not unconnected at all. Um, and what I think is actually quite was actually, I think is quite sobering. And I want to just take a moment for us as Freetonians or not Freetonians who, you know, people on this call. What I think is actually quite sobering is when you, you look at that as an example, which is replicated multiple times in multiple institutions across the country. For me, this is why we are poor. This is why as a nation, we haven't developed, because individuals will stand in front of something that could change the, the whole dynamics of how our city is run, could change the lives of individual people. And these people stand in front of progress and they are supported in doing that. All right, um, sobering.
Okay, um, um, thank you very much. I'm Fambulam, this is not the mayor of Freetown. Even I can saw ya, O B E, and they talk to, in people them, and they talk to even the one they within the diaspora for make they understand how far it don't come more, how in journey look like from the term where Freetonians say in lectum up till now, and some of the challenges them, and when we serve them beginning a pickup. Why? Because we don't wanna say why now, mayor, lots of mayor, Freeton, one good, we get mayor marketing, we get mayor, we get mayor all over the place. Why is the focus on mayor of Freetown? And we don't see the kind of drainage is there, what it is try for lock, you know, the things that what it is try for do for, for rebrand the council and for make the council develop out in the day. And a lot of people don't like it, because we are used to be as usual, because we are used to who's side and Taika. Now they eat it. So madam mayor, I for can lock all the pump them, so that he make it to get all of this, like you say, all of this controversy. And you said one thing where he really hits me, that since you journey, you have realized that one person can stand in the front of development for salon. It's a clear manifestation and it's a clear indication based on which you don't see and based on your experience now the council. But let me move forward, because like you said, these are controversies that as we go on, you, we need some clarity and explanation. You might not point fingers, but we need to know why certain things are happening in the council. And we may to understand, say, um, couple of counselors them, you know, um, um, couns- counselors then be raised concern that, uh, um, say, inside the council, um, the procurement or the operation, for operational equipment and the transfer station then, then don't be vandalized. We see all out, when I go open that transfer station, the way now see with a really Freetonians there, especially, well, with waste. We see say, we already say the transfer station that they don't vandalize them completely. We also, you already say from the counselors them say, the tricycle them, the tricycle man they were clear dirty, what a strip the streets, um, they've not been paid, and so many things that when the counselors there been put forward to the local ministry of local, uh, um, governments. Why, what's gonna be the cause of all them things here?
Well, um, Rachel, I think say, as I say, um, earlier on, one man, they stand, but he get for be supported. And if I look, if I look this document, if we're not going to our website, when I've gone to Facebook page, I'm personally blown away by what we've achieved in this year, in this last three years. And not to foresee, it's because it's rocket science. I believe say we've been very effective with the support of council staff, of counselors and of the mayor's delivery unit and an amazing array of national and international partners. I believe say we've been successful in delivering, because we are not, we're not focused on waiting to go on to anybody pockets. That's the disadvantage. If you are focused on getting things done, if you're here, you're driven by a passion to see a change, you will see a change, because you'll do all it takes to see that change, because that's why you're here. So deal like today, we find ourselves in a situation where our city was clean and we had the mayor of Monrovia, the mayor of Canifig, the UN CDF representative from Tanzania, we can I see mayor Yvonne, he say you are following Kigali. And then what happens? All of a sudden, that's not good news. And one individual says, I'm not paying, I don't know about this. Then the transfer stations, we go before make, wait till we already make it through, even more efficient. And then again, I'm not paying, but we see so strange, oh, we've just had a power cut. I'm actually in Bo in a hotel, so I'm not at all.
Yeah, we'll try get, get, we'll try get something, you know, for bring a little bit of light to you.
Yes, let me, I can get my phone on, um, okay, my phone's over there, oh. I'm gonna keep talking whilst we try and get a phone over here. And it's a hotel, so hopefully they'll put the generator on in a minute. Um, so what I was seeing was, um, interestingly enough, um, these, this is a donor funded project, the transfer stations, the fecal sludge treatment plant, um, as well as the property rate system. The, the, it's a donor funded project. Sorry about that, there's somebody else here, and she's just has to turn that off, please. Please turn it off.
Power cuts with the new direction.
So sorry about that. Okay, so, um, this is, this is, this is, as I was saying, these are donor funded. These are donor funded projects.
Look at them.
So the donor, F C D O, known as DIFID, obviously, they're concerned, because this is taxpayers' money in the UK, not in substantial amounts of taxpayers' money. So the head of DIFID suggested we have a meeting with the Minister of Planning and Development, because that's the ministry that supervises the, um, the donors. So we had that meeting and she expressed a concern that, you know, the, the transfer stations haven't opened. Um, could he weigh in? And, and he agreed that we would have a technical meeting where he would witness, um, DIFID and all the NGOs involved handing over this project to council, to bring in that weight of central government. So he came, um, the C A.
The chief administrator.
No, the minister of planning and development, the minister, the head of DIFID, or the lights back. The head of, as well as the heads of the NGOs whi- whi- which have done the projects. These are international NGOs, CRS, I G C and GOAL. Um, C H O's, even though he was specifically invited.
Um, Dolly, can you please mute, can you please mute your, your device, please? Put it on mute. I'm sorry, mute. Thank you.
He chose to not attend, but he was represented. Um, there were, his deputy was there, um, a number of counselors were there and staff were there. The meeting went on for two hours with the minister, and at the end of that, DIFID did a minute and we agreed next steps. That meeting was on the twelfth of July. Today is the fourth of September. None of those steps have been followed. And yet, nobody has held the C A accountable. I mean, this is a minister of government standing with the head of, of DIFID. And you, and different have written again to say, you know, nothing's been done. And I have said, nothing's been done, is one man. So, you know, what kind of impunity is that? So you kind of.
When he, is this, you can't, hold on mayor, I can understand you keep saying, we understand say, the C A, which is the chief administrator, is the center of, of, of this, uh, um, whole thing. But according to what he miss say, Yerry from, um, I say, due, the due process has not been followed. has not been followed. So can you elaborate on that due process, the way you not follow? As to why up till now, the transfer station not get the security that is needed? And the people are waiting for pay the tricycle people them, do so where they caused this plenty Dottina Street. Can you explain what's another procedure that is needed to be done so that the C A can sign and make everything work?
Yeah, let me just reject that statement altogether, you know, um. Because, you know, the C A don't, they say, oh, you know, I won't sign without going to a bunch, the right procurement process. You know where we are in the process? That with the process where Diffid can sit on pan, the head of Diffid, the head of C R S and the minister of planning, you know where we are? We haven't started the procurement process. That's where we are. There's a document that's been on his table since about April. For make he send up to the procurement guy to do the procurement process, which is the transparent process. So it's just a total camouflage. And then he say, you don't know about the project. You and I, now we two don't sit down, you in fact chaired the first steering committee meeting. You took possession of the project vehicle. You all am, you see now you're not the chief sanitation officer. Now you forget the vehicle for this project. You take the vehicle, now you've been used until you fail to comply with some of the requirements of the donor and they withdrew the vehicle. You sent a representative to the, the, the NGO for sit on the procurement panel for the contractor where the NGO use. You and me go to several meetings with the Ministry of Lands in order for security sites. Me and you been there together when the Minister of Land hand the documents over to we for the site of the transfer station, it give me a me and a pass on to you. You then worked with the ministry for validate the documents. You did in, in copy of an email from the sanitation head. We get all the project documents dated the twenty sixth of March, twenty twenty. And not only that, if you be still get questioned, when Diffid offer in July twenty twenty for can a council and can brief you because you had begun to complain, why is the money from Diffid not coming to the council? And I explained to you, say Diffid does not put funds in government, not local government, not central government, not different policy, not salon. You say if Diffid not give him money, you know, and nobody project. I say let Diffid can, Diffid said and become, you not be given time, you not be given audience. You say they're not give you couple, if you're not the kind of the account night, council, where you go to the procurement, then you're not interested. So you know, it's, the, the project was run by an NGO. When it came to the handover, you were fully read, fully aware. Even so, Diffid again, just very recently came to council, gave you another opportunity. You have chosen to not engage at all. No one's asking you to sign a check. You've been asked to send an approval to the procurement for them to go through a process which involves putting out an advert in the paper to say we need these vehicles um, for to operationalize the transfer stations or, uh, uh, these staffs. That would then go through a big process. You are the chair of the procurement committee. It would all go through you, but no, what you are doing is very deliberately on the two, the two areas that when the mayor in flagship, sanitation and then revenue, because you can't do anything without revenue. You need take a stand and say, I'm doing nothing. And amazingly, amazingly, no one is stopping you. Amazingly.
That, that, that's where I want, that's that I want for reach now, where you say nobody is stopping. Because having said all of this, um, why you think say in your, you know, I haven't seen all of this and all this reaction from the, the C A. Why you think say the C A, like you said, is deliberately doing all of those things, stopping progress? So speak, because if we assist transfer station, all the progress that you're trying to make. And, uh, one person is topping it and nobody in the government, not even the president and, uh, or the local, uh, uh, minister is saying anything about it. Why do you think it's so?
Well, before I answer that, I, 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 I'll, I'll just tell you something else that's going on right now, right? Maybe it go give some context. And not, you know.
Just go, go to my que- my question, then you can.
Okay, I'll tell you, I'll tell you that I think it's a pattern. I'll tell you that what's going on now is Edsa. You know, and I wrote back, I went to Edsa back in March and my letters have been ignored. I've written two letters. Edsa and it did polls for put electric poles and it dig the ground in the city, then it left the Dotty. Then S L R A, um, then it did the roads, then it left the Dotty. And then we have been doing flood mitigation. It's a concept, the first time it was heard was when I came in in twenty eighteen. You know, this very structured way of trying to prevent flooding. Um, in twenty eighteen, we raised money from various sources. In twenty nineteen, government said, oh, this is such a good thing. Um, R M F A, there's funding. Uh, it was, that, that was without its drama. Because they are ever say money, road maintenance fund for anybody who doesn't know, they're on the day for years, okay? But with the A B C, I traveled, I came back, I found a proposal had been delivered to I F, R M F A to clean thirteen bridges and waterways. Now say what? We can do sixty eight for that money. I call R M F A, I say that proposal, I get cancelled. I'm sending in a new one.
So the one way, you always then send that for sixteen.
Not, not, yeah, no, for twenty. Me C A, I didn't submit, I'm thirteen, with the, with the same money, I put sixty eight. I was.
With that same money, then you be able for put sixty eight.
Eight in twenty nineteen. I was supported, we got the money from the finance, uh, ministry. Twenty twenty, we were able to get World Bank and EU funding for flood mitigation. Twenty twenty one, with all the COVID pressures on international organizations. We weren't able to get, we got a small amount from U N Habitat, but not enough to do the full work. So we wrote back to R M F A and said, remember, we done such a good job, you know, in twenty nineteen. And they were like, yeah, yeah, you did. And we really should give you this money. And we wrote in April. And councillor and, you know, staff went and had meetings and they're like, yeah, no, you're the right people to do this. Hmm, funny thing then happened. Come April, come May, come June, come July, come August, no disbursement. Where you call now, no, but not he answer you. But then what did we see happen? We see S L R A, then get the money, then waiting then they do, the soldiers that way when they walk with we, then you work with them. But, but then he dig the road and then he left the Dotty by the side of the road. All of this happening at a time when the tricycle guys aren't being paid and man go only work for so long without money, then they discourage, they try their best. And then the transfer stations are not being utilized and basically everything that we've been doing in sanitation to make the city a city where Monrovia and Kanyfik and other cities and Ettoxy, we want for study your system. All of a sudden, we see that looking like it's being reversed. And that happens at the same time as you have a social media blast saying transform Freetown has failed. So, you know, that's kind of like an interesting phenomenon.
You been think say there was a sabotage because the money were supposed for council, the council has been moved to, um, road transport and other, uh, uh, areas there. And the whole project was like being sabotaged. Do you wanna, do you wanna feel?
Rachel, Rachel, Freetown City Council is one of twenty two local councils in this country. Most of those local councils receive the funding from R M F A because it's our budgeted allocation. It's our right to receive that money. And yet we've been deprived of it. And of another agency is doing what should be the city's work. So it kind of feels like there's, there's a desire for the city not to be able to show success. Which would be very sad if that was the case, because now we all do Freetown. If Freetown good, now for we all, central government and local government. But this, this happens at the same time as the revenue squeeze. So we have, as I said, this situation where people in the can of council, they're not able to pay. We have, we had over eight hundred queries at our help desk. For months, I kept asking for the teams to go out and address the queries. These are people who have said, I've come to council, I want to pay, but I get this question mark on this. Please just resolve it for me. Why would it take us six months to answer simple queries? Why would we not, why would our communications officer not do any of the adverts? We have the money, the checks have been written for the property rate adverts, but yet they've not been, they've not been taken to the media houses. In fact, the checks are not expire. Why would that not happen? Why would we be in a situation where, when people, um, um, have raised concerns about even the discounts that they're meant to get for age, they are sent away. Um, so, and then when, when.
Say it's like.
And then the cloud, the cloud, we've been famously the iCloud.
Okay, do you have that kind of? Sorry, go on. Uh, Madame Mayo, for what you to say is like, do you have that kind of cordial relationship with, uh, um, your, um, your staff, meaning the one that, you know, the one that within a the administrative position, you have that kind of cordiality with them so that the work was smooth and easy for you?
You know, um, later you say in twenty eighteen, I, I did a Christmas party. Not council, I did a Christmas party for the staff. Um, and I remember staff saying to me, this is the first time anybody has done that for us. We have had really great times together, staff. We, 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 we dance, daddy. We dance, we do, we do a, uh, it's kind of like a housewarming kind of thing when we move up to the new hall, the new city hall. Um. The challenge that we have with staff. Now, I will say that on two levels. You get a level, we, we not talk about earlier. We change, that change we need, we go make Freetown better for everybody. Go result in a change for some people, where you go means say, things are not the way they used to be. Um, then a one. Then the other level is intimidation. Because when you have the chief administrator as the person with responsibility. We, we, you know, not irresponsible for the staff in terms of their, their reporting goes to him. It possibly tell you say, and we've seen this so many times and it's really ratcheted up. It don't really, it don't, don't really increase right now. I don't get two people in the last forty eight hours, wait on day in this position. Where you get somebody, where they tell you say, you know, you walk with mayor, yeah? Are you walk with mayor? Wait, we may go, can the election really suck you? Anything you want, anything, you document, we not sign on whilst you're here.
So staff are basically, staff are being threatened.
Yeah, in twenty nineteen, in twenty nineteen, when there was a strike. There was a document where people, then the staff, they report time to me, and I know those staff have been victimized. They're all being get for go one by one. If anybody not be sign their name against that petition, say they want pull me. They were in deep trouble. So this is the level of dysfunctionality where we don't do work with. And we've, we've managed, it's been up and down, up and down, we've kind of gone through. But we don't see, for a reach a point where it is so serious now. I have written letters of complaint for three years. And now all of a sudden, instead of actually those letters being addressed over three years. Whether it's the non-payment of NACIT, whether it's dead people that I found on the payroll. Whether it's, uh, uh, um, not responding to legal queries resulting in our accounts being garnished sheet. Just poor administrative practices. None of them letter in there. Oh, not to mention, keep me malice for months or weeks at a time. So that the council really grants a hope, because obviously if you're not speaking to me, then you won't come to meetings and then the staff are all scared about whether they should come to the meeting or not come to the meeting. So I've been writing about this dysfunctionality for years. And now all of a sudden, we don't respond to the three years of letters. But we do come and institute an inquiry into me.
Right, right, e- 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 exactly, because we all know say you don't com- complain, you don't write so many letters. And, um, now that you make it clear to salon people and say, none of their letter, they did not address none. They're not looking to none, but now they have the time to come for come make an inquiry or on your matter, on your issue as to what they happen at the council. And you, you talk about before I move to the mayor delivery units, because that's another, uh, um, thing we don't come up as well. You, I want for you verify, how long you and the C A don't keep malice? Let's put it that way.
I don't keep malice, I'm a grown woman.
Okay, how long is not, okay, how long is not be, how long is not been talking to you? How long?
So we, I mean, it's happened, I've, I've got it all documented, I can't remember the dates off the top of my head. But it first happened in twenty eighteen, it happened in twenty nineteen, it happened in twenty twenty. Um, and then this most recent time was from May to date with two exceptions.
Uh, okay.
May to date, two exceptions. Um, when there was a, an event at council that was attended by the, um, president and the first lady. He spoke to me on that day. And then, um, in June, when he was very ill. Um, um, and I, you know, I went with a team to, to see him and to just, you know, offer condolences and um, best wishes. Um, he obviously spoke to me then. Um, but beyond that, um, there's been no communication until yesterday, he spoke yesterday.
Okay, so, um, so what's in at the current status now of the transfer station? Because we don't already say it's vandalized. What is the situation now? Uh, what is the situation?
Sadly, it is the same. Sadly, you know.
All the investment, we million dollars.
Yes, of Diffid money is sitting there, unutilized, you know, and, and what's, what's actually really amusing. Um, is that the C A has now written a letter to me, um, this week. Asking for me to give him information about the transfer stations. And I've just forwarded that image in, um, letter to the staff to ask them to reply to him. Um, I, because that's just very, very funny. Um, I think what's at the heart of this is a realization, and I think if, if there's anything that people should take away from this, is when you, when you have a request to procure, to start a procurement process, that's all it is. It's a request to start a procurement process. There is nothing in starting a procurement process where there is any risk of improprietary, of, the, the process itself is where the due diligence gets done. So if you, if you actually prevent the process from starting on the grounds that, oh, I don't know anything, I want to write money for something I don't know. And, and coming back to the iCloud.
So you want for clear, this say, as of now, the transfer, transfer station then remains the same. And they don't vandalize with so millions of dollars where Diffid don't fund now we.
Absolutely.
Just going down like that.
Shame, you know, that's such a shame, um, because, you know, this is taxpayers' money. And we're in a country where sadly still very dependent on donor funding. So it's really quite sad. I find it so heartbreaking. Because when we launched Transform Freetown on the twenty fourth of January twenty nineteen at Meata Conference Center. The concept of the transfer stations was presented. This is not something that came up yesterday. The transfer stations have been in, 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 in the transfers, the transform Freetown documents. The whole process, like I said, the level of involvement, sometimes Fumble they go member. It's a way the Jomo Connecta Road one, where the Minister of Land been go broken, that was in the news. You know, the C A and myself were there together. Um, you know, there's been so much engagement. We don't get for engage in shell compound. There were persons with disability, we been tap now inside USAI, we been need for do the transfer station, we get for engage them. The, the estate officer, the engineer, council has been so fully involved in this process. For then now you say, you know, no nothing but um, and therefore you will not, not sign a check. Not give money, not pay money, but procure, go through a transparent process to procure the equipment required to make them functional. And even if, let's just say for argument's sake, Rachel, let's say for argument's sake, that you had amnesia. And you'd forgotten everything that had happened before. Let's say that had happened. You know, could just come and say, Mayo, I need forget, you know, this tear. I, I, I'm not this and this, I know you remember, can we just sit and have a meeting and clarify this? Because I just want to do this so we can get this process going. That's not, you see, that's what you do if your spirit was a spirit of constructive development. But if your spirit is actually to stop the work. Constructive development. But if your spirit is actually to stop the work, then you do what's been done. Which is to say, I'm not doing it, I'm not doing it, I'm not talking to anyone, I'm not doing it.
So what is, you know, I, I, I'm, I'm sorry that we are, we are still, you know, uh, going to in this matter because. It is sad for make, you know, we, same, the council and D F I D. Spend so much money for, for try for make their kind of developments here soon as alone. Then one person that stop them according to all this explanation. And the, 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 the look, what, what's not the min, what's in the minister, what, what is this saying? Or what is, what, what is anybody saying in the government? What are they doing?
Um, I haven't heard anything. And we did have the Minister of Planning come to the meeting. Um, and I did follow up with him, but um, it, you know, the Minister of Local Government was copied in that letter. He was invited to that meeting with the Minister of Planning and the head of D F I D. He didn't come, he didn't send a representative. Um, but what they're doing is they're setting up an inquiry into, into me. Into the administrative.
Anyway, that, that will be left to the people of, of Free Town to decide, you know, because they elected you. So uh, make we move on, uh, um, it's really sad, you know, it's really, really sad. This is, you know, this is some of the things that we, you know, no puts politics aside, this is some of the things that we don't care, it's alone be in. This is some of the things that we don't make salon they develop, like, like, like I said, let's put politics aside. Let, let we put away with differences then, but when we see developments, let we accept them, maybe grab them, regardless of who that it come out from. So I think we have to begin to change our mindset. Let's put Sierra Leone, Sierra Leone first before anything else, before party. When we see developments, we need for embrace them. So, but I, I, I'm happy that you've been able to clear this, and it's a sad situation. That till now, no decision, uh, 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 nobody not say anything with those transfer station. Where don't cost millions of dollars and they're still there diminishing, wrecking just like that. It's a sad one to know at this point. But let we move on to the, the mayor delivery unit. Where also don't be a talk from uh um the C A that, oh, I don't know what's in at the recruitment process. Or what is the mayor delivery unit doing, and uh, you know, the issue of, of spending so much money, traveling and all of this. I want to just make clarity, because today is just about talking about what you don't do. And clarity on certain things that is centered around you, that is centered around your, your credibility. You know, so what's in now the function of the mayor delivery unit? And how this mayor delivery unit come about now the council?
Okay, thanks again, um, Rachel. So, um, family, some, some people are going to say. I served as the team lead for the president's delivery team, um, post Ebola. And that, that was a team, we, I work with McKinsey, the management consultants, global management consultants, um, but also T B I. And the concept of delivery units were first, was first created by Tony Blair. When you bring in private sector practices and private se- sectors, individuals with expertise into the public space. And my role as the president's delivery team lead, um, I've been getting the opportunity for meet with the delivery teams in Kenya. In, in Rwanda, um, in Liberia, in Kaduna State. Delivery teams can be at any level of government. It can be at state level, it can be at mayor's level. It can be at central government's level, it can be at ministry level. And it very similar in some ways to like a project implementing unit. So many of we M M D A's right now, Ministry of Finance get P M F U, Ministry of Health get A Power. You get uh Ministry of Transport, then get a P I U right now for deliver a specific project. For Ministry of Finance, not all the World Bank projects and A D B projects, and it goes through the Ministry of Transport. It's a specific one for a specific World Bank project. In other countries and other places, like what we do for the president's delivery team, it wasn't, it was a, at central level. For drive particular targets. If we don't, I think that, I can, you're thinking it's an Einstein talk, this talk, but if not, you wrong person, I quote, when I just correct me. Then one quote they will say, if you keep on doing the same thing over and over again, you go keep on getting the same results. City council don't be for decades, and Free Tonians them, nobody see the kind of push in development. Way we all been look for and we all need. Having had the experience of the P D T, where you get a focused team, focused on helping to drive through. In collaboration and in support of existing staff in ministries. Having had that experience and also having engaged delivery teams internationally on the continent of Africa too. I come in as mayor and me first hundred days, I've been get four work streams. One, low hanging fruit, flood mitigation. Two. Looking at all the processes, systems, contracts and assets of council. Because me an accountant, that's something my end you work, when I go some sunny for understand what in the, in order for me can know how I move forward. Three, beginning the work to build the Transform Free Town plan. And four, establishing a mayor's delivery unit in order for get additional technical expertise. For able for do all of the above. The mayor's delivery units are present them to the staff. In my first week, including the C A, to the counselors, to the central government, to N G Os, to development partners. Me, most of the partners, in fact, all partners are familiar with the concept. So there was a willingness and an eagerness to support this because it was going to help to accelerate. We need for members say, Free Town City Council with staff, staff structure. The staff structure of Free Town City Council, not a replica of the staff structure at all of the other councils. Whether now Moayamba, when a small council, or Karine, when a tiny council. Post local, but Free Town, Free Town is a city, has one point five million people, yet we get the same fourteen core staff. So one engineer, one valuation officer, one finance officer. And then beneath that fourteen staff, you go to heads of departments, but they're structured. Based on the, the, based on, I guess, history, because you get an account department, you get estates. But you don't have like anything we go deal with urban mobility or transport. You don't have anything that will deal with housing, you don't have any department that will deal with maternal mortality reductions. You're not getting a department, so basically Transform Free Town came, whether or not a cable car or planting a million trees. The vision of Transform Free Town needed to have supporting staff, not to exclude at all, and that hasn't happened. You know, but a man, I've learned so much in the last six months, it's been amazing. It's really, really valuable experience for me, growth experience for me. Because I've seen, I don't see, I didn't talk English back, I don't see where the amount of support, even this week, where, where, where pass so. We don't start another Excel training. There is collaboration, there's teamwork, um, there's growth. Um, and there's money on both sides.
You need not just a technical support to the council.
Yes, and.
Okay, so, so.
Rachel, I'll just finish because then I go skip the question. So the mayor's every unit is also not a static body. A key feature of the mayor's delivery unit, that in fact say, eh eh at any point in time. It comprises predominantly of volunteers. Now, we get volunteers from Sierra Leone. We get volunteers from Dasper, we get volunteers, I mean, people like, uh, uh, I can call somebody. Where they work for the U N, now, um, Dubai, she, she's H R. She had six weeks leave, it take up, it can be M D U, it can't work with we. We get people them, we, I mean, Amira, she's uh uh um, she was living in Lebanon, I have Sierra Leone, I have Lebanese. She read about what we're doing, it can volunteer. We also have McKinsey staff. So like just two days ago, we received a McKinsey guy from, from Croatia, but we just said goodbye to somebody from Spain. And we have people coming from all over the world because Transform Free Town has become a global phenomenon. We get, we, it'd be featured at Columbia University, we get Columbia Urban Planning Team. Um, Urban Planning Master Students, they already come, but we've had people from Zurich, from Bern, from, from uh uh London. But we've also had people from Lagos, we've had a doctor who's actually on this call, Onyeka, we're now a, a public health specialist. We can volunteer, Onyeka work with we, um, and she has been not paid anything. She first came across us when she was doing her masters at Oxford. She interned with us while she was at Oxford, it go back to Lagos, and she's on this call. It go back to Lagos, it's telling her husband say, she's so excited about what we're doing, she came back to us for eight weeks. And gave us her time pro bono. So the vast majority, wait, I just want to get this right. We get a significant proportion, and tomorrow I'll be uploading a video from one of our M D U, just talking about her experience. Then we get another category. We get a category, when are the people them, we don't apply. To a donor for work on a project, where the donor did do for support Transform Free Town. So for example, we get the, somebody to work on Guma, she's Rwandan. He applied for, for, for that job day, it goes through the, the international process, when he come, he sit on with M D U. We also get somebody like Modupe Williams, waving dinner London, he was so uh uh committed to taking part in this. It come for the brainstormings, that we call them planning labs, where we take design Transform Free Town. It go back now London, then it come in, it say, I'm going to give you three months of my time. It end up give we a year and a half, pro bono. Then there was a World Bank job, we, on the project, we dinner council, he apply. He apply, it's a, it's the World Bank, the interview, P M F U, now, now Ministry of Finance, and any interview. If not C R S, if not E U, who are ever not a donor, now then the interview. And the interesting thing is, because now for council. If not a donor, where the funds they come into council or into the government of Sierra Leone, because they have different ways of doing it. They almost always write to the C A and ask him to give somebody to be on the recruitment panel. So for the M D U, I see it is saying, oh, no, nothing about them.
Yeah, but, um, yeah. He, he, he is actually. That's one of the thing concern that, you know, aware of the, the recruitment process.
So the recruitment process at now to extend to you, so.
Yes.
It's either you volunteer, or you go through a recruitment process through the N G O or the donor where you pay. In the case, because he keeps on going on about Manja, Cardbo, who's my team lead. And um, Manja is paid for by Irish aid, and there was a recruitment process. The fact that she was a part, and she had been volunteering, working voluntarily. The, the, this concept, whether now the P, the um, I power, I, I power, now Ministry of Health. Whether or not P M F U, these concepts of having a unit. In a, there's a delivery team in Ministry of, of Education. The concept of a delivery team, whether it was, it was the one in State House under Enes Kromer. Or the one that maybe is being, because I understand, I saw a presentation, there's going to be one created now in the new, it, within this administration. Delivery units are there to support, to accelerate growth and delivery of either projects or programs. So there's, this is the idea behind Transform Free Town Mayor's Delivery Unit. And I'm quite certain that there is no capacity existing in council for develop. A, a cable car system, for work on a clean cooking uh um strategy. Um, which is what we need as part of our climate change agenda. Um, it's a question of building. And I, there have been great relationships, but I'll say, you know, sometimes in the, if passing the under pressure, you know, then go say different things. But we've got so many photographs, so many fond memories, um, so many happy occasions of us really. Of me witnessing the M D U and staff of council growing collectively and working together in communities with councils. Um, but today, the narrative might be different, but you know, I think. I think time will tell. I'm, I'm actually really looking forward to this um um administrative. I'm looking forward to this administrative inquiry, because there'll be an opportunity for a lot of this to come out and for all the evidence to be shown. I mean, I've, there've been times that I've invited, I've asked you to do something, he's like, I know, make M D U do the Andy, that didn't get us skilled. I mean, it's, it's no secret, it's no secret that M D U has been an integral part of Transform Free Town. Um, and we're grateful, and the counselors are grateful, they know that the, the, you know, the C A says. It's not his job to write proposals, but we've had to write lots of proposals. We've had to enter into lots of international competitions in order to resource mobilize to do the work that Free Tonians have seen us do. It wouldn't have come if we were just sitting at council and relying on property rates, which, you know, we already being sabotaged as well. We've needed to mobilize resources externally.
All right, so, um, um, like I say, we need sudden clarity of, of, of things them, we, you know, centered around you. And as we go, um, um, we de see, you know, all the things that we do talk about and make clarity on certain issue. So I want to move, move on the anti-corruption um side. Um, I think couple of days before you travel. You were invited to the Anti-Corruption Commission Office. You go on for tell family, waiting to be the reason and uh behind that, uh uh um, someone, whether someone you know the A C C.
Yeah, uh, uh, Rachel, I, I mean, I just find them, you, you see the big smile on my face. I just find them so interesting, because um, that, that summons, they come on the same day. With the counselors, they're right, and say they want the removal of the C A, and then suddenly I get summons. This has been something we don't go on, and I'm actually quite amazed, because I can really wonder if, you know, in we, in we mid. Uh, Ministry Department and agencies, particularly something like the A C C, I can wonder what's in at the cost benefit analysis, what they can do. In terms of the man hours and time and effort spent on certain things. So I got called, you know, on that day. And the funny thing is, this particular audit query, where now, uh, um, I call to the A C C on. Now, one, we don't come up in other M D A then reports, and what is it? It is, and, and in some cases, it hasn't come up at all, but nobody seems to have been called to A C C about it. What is it? So we'd already say manager, I'm a team lead, and I must hasten to add, that's contrary to what somebody was saying on A Y V the other day. Manja's not a P A, she is a seasoned administrative professional, um, with, you know. Post-grad qualifications, not singular but plural, um, and experience. Um, and because when you're doing, when you're doing what we are seeking to do. Not just put sand on the map, and I can say, I can say we've done that, because I, I, I have given two Ted Talks since I've been mayor. With viewings, one get over two point two million views, the other get over one point four million views, so that's like selling our story. But I've been awarded um Mayor of the Year by U Penn, University of Pennsylvania. Um, by, and by the City of Charleston Women of the Year, plus the Time and the, and the, and the B B C. Why I did bring this? I did bring this because this has all come about. Because of a very focused engagement on the international platform. Just sharing the very exciting vision, which is Transform Free Town. But the follow-up, when we don't do a presentation, the follow-up is very, very important. And when I ask the C A for, join me for go, the U N meetings in twenty nineteen, it come. But in, it's saying, you know, Sabi, you know, you know, you know, they do this, you know, enable talk. So we, I would do a presentation, would go into a meeting, and then he would just either leave or maybe not come. Or just sits, and I'm like, eh, no, I mean, the networking, this is how we, we, this is how we actually. Planted this seed in people's heads, that's how you get the follow-on conversations, that's how you then plan a Zoom call for the next week or conference call. That's how you actually lead to untapping. So I became, I mean, it was clear that I needed to have manager. Um, um, come to these meetings because I needed that follow-up. So Manager came with me to the Global Parliament of Mayors, and as a result of that, we now have a substantial project with the city of Manheim. Because she did the follow-up with that, she also.
Can I just come in, in between quickly before you continue? Um, before now, or before Manja came about, with now Indian at the mayor de- delivery unit. Um, the, the C A, the accompany you for meetings of such nature. And like you say, it's not just about, you know, presentation, it's about the follow-ups, it's about the follow-ups and all of that. So during that, that, those meetings where the C A accompany you, there has not been a proper follow-ups. So they're in T N A, so as a result of that, and he, and he actually confessed that, that in, you know, able then here. So it was as a result of that, that. So it was as a result of that, that Manja of the delivery unit came, you know, to where, where they go with you now, some of them meeting here, because it's a result oriented, if, if I, if I should say.
Very, very. So, so, so let me give you another example, right? So, um, I was invited to be part of Bloomberg Harvard, uh, um, City Leadership Program in twenty eighteen. And they said to me, well, they said to all of us, there were forty of us from around the world, uh, mainly from America, but a number of us from other parts of the world. They say, we allowed for send to senior staff for letting staff go through this very intensive. Um, just imagine Harvard, it's such a privilege, you know, forget a kind of a, you know, very intensive city learning. So I asked the C A for go, um, and the deputy mayor will be able to get a visa, so, cause I've been inviting staff, so one of the councillors go. Now, when you come back from this program, you then have a year of, of follow-on meetings on, in a virtual classroom, you get assignments for do, not, not taxing, but you get things that we get for read up and everything beforehand. Me go, I continue, I do me own, C A go. You know, attend one single virtual session, you know, even answer then call again. So there is like, that, that inability, so we were just like dropped in it. Then even when Harvard sent posting come, because we got to choose, um, a follow-on program, where Danny sent us in camp, but can't work with the council for, for move on that particular thing, and you know, but believe what we work on. We work on fire in slum communities and as Susan's day we choose. But when the lady come, for later even attending meeting, do you mind fly all the way come what's? We're not able for get council staff them, not see for attend their meetings and the. So that, you know, you, you can't just say it's about going on the trip. It's very much about what happens during the trip and after the trip. And, uh, because, because I sit on the Leadership Council of the, of the Leadership Board of the Mayor's, of the Mayor's Migration Council, because I am on the, uh, uh, um, Women for Climate Board, when I go there meetings there, I end up having media. So whether I've got to have, you know, an interview from a news channels, or it's now this, I, I get, I, I do a lot of media work. Um, and so I also need possibly, we're able for be an interface, we're able for structure those, we're able for schedule them. When mayor, you've got to be here, you've got to be a channel this, you know, possibly we're able for use then tools and they wait, where to use email. And we're able for interact with the hosts. So, I mean, that's why Manja did travel with me. So when we go, as I say, we had, we went to New York, um, with, um, um, M C C. And out of that came a conversation with the city of Zurich, me and the mayor, she's a lady, um, Corinne, and we had a fantastic conversation. Me, Im, Manja and Eon, Team Lead, or International Head, we four had dinner together. Out of that dinner and the work, because after the dinner, I had one conversation with her. But Manja has worked with her team and with others at council, including council staff for the last year to secure three point five million dollars for the regeneration of the Central Business District. Street lighting, review, um, um, new pavement, green spaces, car parking. And we only pray say, government go, you know, collaborate, because we've been waiting for a response from S L R A, and we still not get a response, but Zurich then don't send a team cam, then don't send their own consultants for can do a feasibility study. They spread back and they said, green light, it's been passed by their council. That could not have happened if Manja was not at that meeting and did not do the follow-up. So I got called to A C C to say, council paid for Manja's travel and she's not staff of council. But the funny thing is, Ben Calvalla talked to me after and he said, oh, mayor, I no say no to you no more. The Ministry of Sports, where then they travel, then travel with journalists, then they travel with coaches. We not to sport, staff of the ministry, you know, and e- even if, if, eh, eh, um, social welfare, then can ministry, then the gender, then you travel with woman them, something in market two man, persons with disability, they're not staff, you know. Um, I mean, no say.
So why, if the, if the, if, if the A C C boss know that, so why he call you?
He say.
That you are not the only person, or the only, uh, uh, whatever, M D As are also doing it. Ministries are doing it, traveling with, you know, um, you know, technical staff, when not they part of.
Just a process, you say it's just a process.
So why, so why were you picked on? What, what, what?
What he said is just a process, because he say, he say, um, it's, you know, because it's, it's come up as an audit query, but I mean, I do, I am aware of other people who had the exact same audit query and they didn't get called to the A C C. But not another starting, you know, maybe I'm the one that, you know, you're using to trial the process. So it's a process for say, let's address this because, so we come up with a policy. Then I just say, no, for go through this so that they can come up with a policy. So me, I don't mind, because I know that it's value for money. I know that the organizations, we, um, host the meeting that Manja went to. A number of them have taken the time to write letters to confirm the value. So there's tremendous value to council, so it can't, you can't say now, um, waste of money. I mean, it's, it's value for money.
Alright, because I want for me to clear this again, because people let me just say, oh, we're anti-corruption caller. Now make you on our way go, you don't go, you don't. So did you, did you travel based on because anti-corruption call you? Krista Bell, can you please mute, please? Can you please mute your device? Alright, you can, you can, you can go ahead now, sorry about it. Oh, you muted. Because too many people, uh, let me see. Krista Bell, you, you want for spoil something now, I don't know what's going on. Mayor, can you unmute yourself, please? Hold on, please. Hold on, family owner, just be aware, we now some just technicality. Where people, please, as you're coming in, please mute your device. If not, it interrupts, um, the interview.
Hey, I'll try again.
Okay.
Got it.
Okay. Yeah, can you mute, please? Yeah, thank you.
Rachel.
Mm-hmm, go ahead.
What you be saying?
No, I'm just, no, I mean, the triforce say, um, people let me talk say, it was all.
On this call, on this call is my darling sister, Marion Cosette Thomas. Um. Right now, I look, I look at this rights now. Um, and she came to Freetown when my dad turned eighty, eighty-five in June, um, and. And he said to me, and I say, you know what, Marion, I mean, his twenty-fifth birthday. Me na kumbra, like I said before, you know, I really, I really want to be there for her birthday. So, um, we, I mean, and it's, it's, so that's, in fact, when they called that day and said for me to go, then talk say, um, oh, they would need to have a follow-on interview with me the next Monday, I was like, no way. Me picking the twenty-five, I'm going, we can continue this conversation when I come back. So it's, you know, it's, um, who knows? Well, I, I don't know, I can't speak for him. But what, what I do know is that, um, the fact that I was traveling was not, not a secret, because I'm a public official. So why do you travel? Would you write letters? Say, how do you travel? Um, so, you know, it was known that I was.
So you already get your, your traveling plans before.
Oh, yeah, I mean, I had booked my ticket like weeks before.
Okay, alright. Okay, okay, thanks for the, um, clarity today as, as, as.
And as you can see, I, I'm home.
Alright, thank you, Mayor, for that clarity today. Also, I for long move on to another, uh, um, the, um, well, I mean, just a concern, just checking on waiting to go on at the council and with the new minister uh, um, of Western Region or Western Area, uh, I stand to be corrected. What's the working relationship with, between Una two?
Well, I, I, I've yet to, there's yet to be any interaction. I mean, I, I know Minister Nabila very well, known every years. Um, and since the announcement, we just meet once at a funeral, um, at a civic laying out. But there's been absolutely no contact, um, between the, the, the new office or the new ministry and our office. Um, we do have a Local Government Act of two thousand and four. Uh, we set out the, the, the framework within which the local councils then operate, um, and the reporting lines, et cetera. Um, and the, that concept, that ministry is not captured in the Local Government Act, um, but to date, there's been no contact.
Okay, so in other words, um, you, uh, which, what's in are your boundaries or who, who are you answer? Let me put it away, who are you answerable to, or who are you communicating with or contacting when it comes to your, 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 your work as a male? Because this is the new ministry that has been created. So are you answerable to that ministry or you are answerable to the local government ministry?
Well, um, I'm answerable to, I think the first place is I'm answerable to the people of Freetown who voted for me. Um, and the way they, they, we, the way I deal with that answering, the way they, they hold me accountable is that if they feel I'm failing, they'll vote me out. Um, so they're the people that I'm answerable to. Of course, there's a structure in the Local Government Act. And there's a supervisory ministry, um, and that supervisory ministry is the Ministry of Local Government. There is no mention of any other ministry in, um, in the, in the Local Government Act.
Okay, so, okay, no, we're deciding. Um, um, I want for low we can to the visits, you know, we understand say the mayor of Kanifin from the Gambia can't visit you. And also the mayor of Liberia invite you. You know, um, for later continue and they happen where you don't see them counting in the, what's gonna be the purpose? What's really attract them to, 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 to what you're doing in Freetown? What was the purpose and how it be look like for you?
So Transform Freetown, you know, you just start something with a passion, with a commitment, you know, you know, say they go. Um. My background is private sector. Not, we ever did in politics before. But one thing we don't be a constant with me is a desire for people's lives to be better. But also for let we get an environment where healthy, um, and we sustainable. So sanitation, sanitation, it's like for me, I mean, if you do, if you do it to me in my vehicle, my husband gets really irritated, because if I talk to another car, I drive along, pass the guy, I just say, oh my gosh, this is a dirty, oh shit, and I then I stop, I call this person, they call that person. You're like, what's going on here? What, what's happened? What happened here? Um. Sanitation, it's, it's really take lightly, it impact all of we life. Because any public health official or professional will tell you, say, sanitation, the hygiene, disease burden. You know, we, not alone, malaria, not a major killer. And malaria directly related to sanitation. Disentery, diarrhea, a major killer for under fives, directly related to sanitation. The challenges we're getting with city, and I gave a lecture of the, to the Faculty of Engineering, um, two or three days ago, um, entitled Planning in a Rapidly Growing City. Or Planning for a Rapidly Growing City, the challenge we'll get with sanitation, not just about what we do. Now about how we live, the facts that we do in a city, we're not getting any planning. Where anybody to build anything, any site anyhow, whether you go block gutter, you do go block river. Where they build on hill with steep soil, so that's nobody not able access they, so there's like no provision of services, because you are actually inaccessible. So that sanitation mattering, it really for me, so, so important. And so I would, I, we, we, we have worked the whole value chain from behavior with the Cleaners Zone Competition, again, these are all things which have been sabotaged. That Cleaners Zone Competition, the, the, I, 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 I segue small, Rachel, Rob Motpandis. We, we do the first prize, now the, the mayor of Hull, who we twinned with, was here for that. When Tar Road win the prize, forget a road, we're going to use recycled plastic. I'm not part of procurement in the council. A contractor was procured, four hundred and fifty million leons was spent, we not see road. When I talk, talk to, eventually, we got the police involved and we had the man arrested. The next day, the C A go release some from the cell and say, in the make an undertaking, said Mango get all the materials. Till today, we not see one material. One material, we not see one material. And here we are now, that road day, we're still trying to build it with yet more money. And now we struggle with resources because of the people not being encouraged to pay. Nobody going out to, the adverts not being done, the, the system being shut down because of the non-payment of the subscription for the iCloud and so on. So sanitation, value chain, we work the whole value chain and people saw it. People saw the cleanliness of Freetown. You see Freetown, we didn't keep the grass cut. You know, but to do these things, you need, you need resources. So if you say, I'm not going to pay the people who sleep the ground, if you say, I'm going to make sure the transport stations don't work. If you say, I'm going to make sure that there's no money in the council, so you're gonna barely pay staff, and there's hardly anything left to pay for the Cleaners Zone Competition prizes, to pay for our community engagement and to make sure the eight-two-four-four hotline is working. We got an eight-two-four-four hotline, we put computers, we set up on the east, the west and the central. We set up with public, we public health officers working in collaboration with the, with the Met Police. So that anybody we call with a query, we able for respond to that query. If you create so much confusion, that it's, you, you negate all of that. You create confusion so that no processes are working. But they came because we developed a system which demonstrates what can be done even in a country like us, even in a small West African city. Where you'd use tricycles instead of big trucks, because that doesn't suit us. We get informal sentiments, how you will get, you know, the big fancy trucks for go into Moiba. But our tricycles can do that. We, we created composting position, we get composting, so you can do your organic waste. Um, and then you get less coming through to, to be used for, to be having to go to the, to the landfill. We're still working on getting recycling started before the end of the year, and we're also working with somebody. Yes, then come for C D system, for, and when I go Monrovia, because Monrovia invites me, they ask me for giving the, the speech on Monrovia day. When we arrive, we had dinner, we done by ten with the mayor and his team. Ten o'clock, I kid you not, Mayor Jefferson said to me, mayor, I hope you're not too tired. I really want for, let me start the conversation about the sanitation, can we start now? We've booked a conference room downstairs, a meeting room downstairs in the hotel. We stayed up till almost twelve o'clock, talking him through. Um, and I think it's something that we can be proud of as Sierra Leoneans, that we work together, because not to be one man no more. We all the put idea, we all the come together, we, you know, that's the beauty of Transform Freetown. It's a collaborative effort. All man they bring your own sense come, and we see what can come out of that. And we've developed something, and in spite of the obstacles, we no say, we're gonna get this back on track. What it should be, but it go be, we go get back there.
Alright, I want for talk to me, me, me family, we the, now the town hall, the virtual town hall say, if I get any question for mayor, I get time ready, because we are wrapping up, you know, with all and discussion there. So, and we want for Yuri from Una, we to now want for talk to the mayor about, or we to now want for make the mayor do more inside Freetown. Um, so we can to that stage very, very soon. But mayor, I also want for you talk about, you know, the tree planting where they go on and so many other things that we go on, because not, not development we want for Yuri, in no matter outside the development they come on. In no matter whose party they come on, we want development alone, we want development of freedom. So let's talk about all then tear out for me to get, and you know, flooding, climate change, you know, so many things that happen. And this dirty business, like you say, that cause a lot of flooding, you know, and landslide and all of what's like, all of those things. I want you to tell me as a mayor, what you don't do in a freedom, for me to get some of them things there, so, and then disaster. And then disaster has already take place in Freetown.
Okay, so, um, I mentioned the flood mitigation, we, this year. Uh, um, we, we only be able to the phase one. Because the, the resources or requests not be made available. Um, but that's okay. Um, you know, we go continue for persist. In if it not happen now, it will happen eventually. If we be not able for collective property rates, so it's I could do, I will say to Freetonians, anybody where they listen. Now we all get in city, I can always say, council now, where you put inside, now you prove. So if we want for see a better Freetown, let all man pay you property rates. And I know if you tell me say I've been trying mayor, they're not be, it not be possible, not give up. I was just say to you, go on a Roquel Commercial Bank or Echo Bank or Zenith Bank or Standard Chartered Bank. You not get for kind of council, you can pay from day. And if for some reason, you not get a property, a demand note, send me an email. I go forward and to the relevant departments, we go make sure so you get them. My email is very simple, and I mean name, yvonne dot akki dot Sawyer. At F C C dot gov dot S L, yvonne dot akki dot Sawyer, F C C dot gov dot S L. Just send me the address of the property and I go make sure say we follow up on that. So i- in terms of mitigation, I want to bring another point. I talked just now about, um, the lecture we again at Fabi College a couple of days ago. And this is critical because a lot of Freetonians, they're not aware of this. So many times on, on social media, on Facebook and conversations, you can hear people and say. But mayor, why do you allow people then for build this now, or you know, why are people being given building permits? The fact of the matter is, there are two very, very important elements of urban management. Where you do see pretty much everywhere in the world where you see any silver development to go on. And that is urban planning and building permit issuance. So you waiting at this call, whether you do in England, America, Germany or USA ever. I shall say, if you want for do any development work now, you host, let us say you even want build new host. Let's say you just want convert, you loft maybe into a room, you not get for go now you local council, you do. Because there is a plan for that city, there's a plan for that locality. And that plan day also come with them regulations. And it come with them a building permit regime, where the effort able for manage and control the city. In our case in Saraleon, land use planning and building permit are core issuance according to the Local Government Act. Not a function of the councils, but unfortunately, the act, the, the, the function has never been devolved. So we there now today, anybody can build anything and I have no idea. You know, you go see, in fact, the latest one, the latest trend is people doing refurbishment work. Where all the, the, the cement, the brick, the altine, not only pavement it did. People then they build in waterways. I recently saw that and tried to stop it, I write to the Minister of Land and Minister of Environment. Possibly build a car wash now, a waterway. They previously done it, tried to do it in a canal. But then we tell you say they get permits, they will get permit for build or there will be no permit. So when you say flooding, if people then they build on the steep hills of Freetown. And then it cut all the trees, all that gravel, they run can donate city. And it causes flooding, it causes land.
What you don't do now, as a mayor for?
I just want to you say, we not get the mandate. This is the point I need people to appreciate and understand. If you are not in charge of planning the city or issuing building permits. And people can build anything they want, anywhere they want. Turning around to me and saying, what have you done? It's like, yeah, what can I do? We can put the bandage on the gangrene, we can clearly gutter, but which I mean, I don't share with me, I. Not technical, gutter way, not the height of a man, you team up inside, the money aid not show. We use machines, we clear them, now three time it rain, it was full again. Because the problem is not.
So, so, would I get the mandate?
Ministry of Lands.
You said the council.
Of Lands. Ministry of Lands.
Okay.
And there was an audit report done, a performance audit done in October twenty nineteen by Audit Service Saraleon. Then take a sample of buildings, not only in Freetown, because it's a, it's a national issue. Of the ninety five properties that we didn't sample, none of them are being a building permit. And the conclusion where the audits reports say. Is that the, the ministry should urgently devolve the function to the councils. Because it's not possible at a national level, forget his staff, if this was done at the local level. At every ward, you go able for get a unit. We have actually built a system, a digital transparent system. With support and input from the institution of engineers and the institution of architects. We have a system for building permit issuance, we could be sensitive to the environment. And we could also tie in with a structural plan for the city. We get some, but we can't use it unless the government allows us to.
Alright, so out the tree planting, eh eh eh, projects to go.
It go on, we did on the second phase, um, three hundred and fifty trees, three hundred and fifty thousand trees. Um, um, going into the ground in the next couple of weeks. Um, again, it's been delayed like last year, uh, but we're really, really grateful, this, this is like, this again is. I think this is the, the power of vision, of everyone's vision. When you set a target, you didn't, you, you'd get a roadmap, you didn't know side you go. I can always say one of my favorite sayings, if you fail to plan, you plan to fail. But we took over six months building Transform Freetown, determining those targets, working with multiple stakeholders. And we target for increased vegetation cover by fifty percent, led us to decide to plant a million trees. In January, on the third of January twenty twenty, we launched Freetown the Tree Town. Without any money, DASPR come, come on board, individuals and come on board. Private sector come on board, but most significantly, we pitched to the World Bank and then come on board. So the first two thirds of those trees will be paid for by the World Bank. And we've now done an application, we've entered into a competition with Bloomberg Philanthropies. Um, we, which we were shortlisted, they had six hundred and thirty one applications. We were shortlisted down to the top fifty. We're now going, we're now going for the top fifteen. If we make it through to the top fifteen, we'll be a winner. And that will enable us to sustain the tree planting and the tree monitoring, because we don't just plant. We monitor, we get tree monitors, C B Os, we then actually tag every tree. We get an app, you did go into and you see, you go through and you be able count down to each tree. So we are not to talk, it's actually there, you can see each of the trees that's been planted. And we follow them and then get paid monthly based on the growth of the trees.
Okay, we not get much time again because we need for take questioning from people them. But I just get, I think, what's two, two, three questioning for you. Um, a cou- couple of days ago, I see, um, you know, Dr. Fatu, uh, Sissé and Dr. Shekhu, you know them. Open this hospital where, you know, um, I was really touched because me like I say, anything with a development. In no matter, as long as the development, we all they put on and on that and we all they support. And I find, I got to know that you were very instrumental to ensure that, that, that hospital they team up. And that hospital, they don't for A P C, that hospital, they don't for S M P P, that hospital, they don't for P M D C. It's for Saraleonian and that hospital, they don't for T M U, for M D, for Creo, it's for Saraleon and everybody. So how you able for, for, for get inspired into that kind of project? That you able to help somebody wake up with vision, this kind of vision for make sure say, a well body business improve not alone.
Okay, so not to a hospital, now a post grad training program for, so that we can get specialist gynecologists, obstetricians and pediatricians. So basically, not, not, not post grad medical school, so that then go able for, for specialize. And become a gynecologist and obstetrician or pediatrician. Um, and, and ways to happen, um, I don't need to talk, say, Namika say, where you get a plan, you get a roadmap. Where you get a target, you know, side you go, under we transform Freetown for health. So one of we target for health, now for reduce maternal mortality by forty percent. So I did on Facebook, I see with Fatu, posting, I didn't know her, I see with Fatu post. Um, a report about perinatal mortality and, and E E G statistics. Um, and it was really disturbing, um, for Salon. So I sent him a, a messenger message, I sent him a message, you know, through Facebook. And say, I would like for talk to you, um, and understand what can be done. So we had a conversation, we had a, a conference call and he said to me, the biggest issue we have. Is the fact that we don't have, we don't train in country, so we don't have specialists. Um, and if we able for do that, that goes save so many lives. So I said, well, what will it take? What will it cost? So he tell me, and, um, about four, four million dollars. Um, so I have a network, um, an international network. As I say, I worked for thirty years before I became the mayor of Freetown.
Network, you get for show, Salom, the Eddie Salom. Government so Salom, but with all this network, that's just by the way, don't mind me.
So I reached out, I reached out to a few people, um, and, and thankfully. You, you know, connected with somebody and, uh, of an institution, we being very interested in this. So, um, uh, uh, organized a Zoom call with Fatu and them and myself. We moved it forward and then we brought the Ministry of Health in because it's a medical, it's got to be run by the ministry. By the, by the, um, college, the university teaching hospital complex. You know, because, okay, you can bring the, the funding. Um, but the funding then, you then need to embed the school. So the role we play, I mean for bring the money to the table and I'm on the steering committee. Um, that's, that's, you're sort of overseeing the implementation of this. And it's just such a privilege, when, when we go the other day and we had the, the residents, that the doctors, we did come onto the program for become specialist. When I read in stories, um, I was so moved, but the thing that moved me perhaps the most. Was the funding also allows for the purchase of really important equipment when we are making a salon. So like feet, feet, um, fetal, that's fetal, the column, yes, the, 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 um, scanners, you know, for the baby. Um, and the, 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 um, other, the other equipment, we, they not ever get the salon. I mean, the nurses, the doctors, they were, whoa, they were so pleased. And I, I was like, whoa, you know, this is what Transform Freetown looks like to me. Transform Freetown is about us joining the dots, us carry enough for everybody to do their part. It's not about who takes credit, it's about making sure that today we have fifteen, twenty. You know, doctors who can now qualify, train, you know, and they, they, the, the curriculum's been built. Oh, and, and, and you know, one of our, um, one of our M D U, Dr. Onyeka, who's still on the call, the one was say. You know, studied in, 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 um, in, in Oxford, heard about us from that and then came here. She's been part of that, us has been, my sister is also a doctor, um, because they were all part of the medical school. She was part of, of Comas, so it's like all hands on deck, everybody playing the part. Keep our focus, let our focus always be the development of our country, the development of our people, the transformation of lives. Let that be our focus.
Alright, haven't said all of this, how, you know, we don't talk, we don't talk a lot today, we don't inform. We all today about so many things them, where you don't do, or so many things that really happen. Now, now Freetown and the initiative there, where you call it and all of that. But so, I, I, I learned all of that, how much support you have, you get from the government? How much support, how much help you, you get from the government?
Um, like, so I just gave an example of that, you know, um, school. That's a government, that's government, you know, the government runs the hospitals, the government pays the doctors. So I think this is the bit aside we seen for the missum, something in the. It, it really should be about a collective responsibility and a collective effort. Um, I can Yuri, this narrative say government been giving eighteen billion for Transform Freetown. That's totally incorrect. Um, eighteen billion, that came out just when we launched Transform Freetown. Eighteen billion was the allocation to Freetown City Council in twenty eighteen. For devolved functions, every council, twenty two councils, every council gets devolved function budget. Transform Freetown's budget has largely come ninety percent from external funding. But that doesn't mean that that's the only thing going on in the city. And it really should, you know, let, let us explain what in governments do. So the eighteen billion, now from McCully Street Hospital. Longley Street Hospital, because some hospitals are devolved to the council, were really just a pass through, true state talk me. You know, um, the P H Us, which are desperately underfunded, desperately underfunded. You know, I mean, as when they talked to one C H O the other day, you know, saying they've had a million leons for the entire, um, quarter. What are you gonna do with that, even for clean, then you know, not do.
So in other words, um, ninety percent of, you know, the resources that you're able to. Able to achieve, you know, um, the Transform Freetown come from, you know.
External.
No, external.
Donor or, or in this, like in this last report, there was also an element of private sector. Because we get four markets that are going to be built by a private sector developer.
So much has not been done for.
No, no, so, so, so what would be good though, is what government is responsible for paying for private devolved functions. For let us intervention happen, so I think we're now in September, we've only received one quarter funding. Unless it happened whilst I was away, and that's possible because, um, for my camp, I haven't yet been able to sit down with the F O. So it's possible, but, um, but I really, yeah, I think it's, it's, it's important to understand. That every council has functions that have been devolved to them. And the government devolution means you devolve the funds and the funds get paid. We actually don't use the money, like we get waiting and call an admin budget and we get a sanitation budget. We sanitation budget from government per year for Freetown is eight hundred million leons. We spend per month just on the street sweepers, four hundred and thirty million leons. And of course, nothing else, and of course, the.
So meaning, you know, they go outside at all.
No, no, so, but that's, that's. Why, Freetonians, I'll say again, that's where we all come in. Let all man pay their property rates, let all man pay their business tax license, let all man pay their local tax, even though that's a fairly small amount. Um, and, and speaking of interesting things that happen, I just have to tell you this. Local tax last year in Freetown was ten thousand leons. We went through the whole process of changing it from five to ten, went through parliament, et cetera. This time around, out of the blue, we sent to have it printed, the minister says, no, you can't have it at ten, it's gonna be five. I'm like, hey, you went to parliament, it was ten, now don't end on so, it's five. This, the C A, the C S F say, it's five, that halved our budget for local tax. Having already had a bud, you know, an expenditure budget, we're being based on raising particular revenue. So from every angle, the revenue of this council has been challenged.
I, I, be, be, before, mayor, timed on the really catch, I want for make, we get the voice of the people and for make they ask you question. Uh, before we the wrap up, but before we go to that aspect, um. As a, um, as a woman, because we don't see say recently. Or, on, you know, every time we the talks now, at least a woman they for team up before per leadership. Because of the, we don't see what in the mayor don't do, it don't, it don't really, really inspire woman there. Woman, they low give woman in this country, later on this country. And we get some other parts of, you know, one group, what they say, woman for vice president, woman for vice president. Are you say see that kind movement today? Because now we don't see, we, we all see say, woman there, we are capable. And we have given opportunity to the, to the men for, for so long. And do you think in your own perspective, do you think women should be given the opportunity now and the time? Now, now, we, we cannot wait anymore for, and just say we get the, the, the desire change where woman in the, then they look for. Do you think that woman for play a leadership role where it comes to governance or even go to the position of vice president?
I absolutely think say women have a particular role, fifty percent of the population of this country are women. Um, so even if we just take it from the perspective of, you know, we've had sixty years of male leadership. Fifty percent of us have been led by the other fifty percent, maybe just swap around and see what goes on then. Um, I, I, I look at Covid and we've all seen, it's been, I think it's been a really interesting. Uh, opportunity for see the countries that have done well. Um, have managed the crisis well, because it's been a global, um, issue. So it's, you know, you don't get a lot of opportunities for see what happened in New Zealand, what happened in Norway. You know, what hap, you know, we, we don't see a diff, we don't see in practice in the. in the midst of a crisis, how the different makeup skills um and um attributes of the women bring to leadership, how they can be valuable. Last so many years, let's flip it round. I actually truly believe say, you know, we have deprived ourselves as a nation, um, and many nations actually, because we're not alone, um, of, of the qualities and the skills and the competencies and the drive. Um, and the, I'll say the use of word again, the attributes that women bring to leadership. And, and I think it's time that we test it.
All right, um, um, uh, you know, the, 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 the question that keep popping because, because there's a lot for us to talk about, but because timing, what's the relationship with your party like? Because, you know, some people and they say this, some people and they say that. What's kind of relationship where you and you, you, you party gets when it comes to, you know, the way you, 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 you the lead, the way you, you, I mean, you, you, you doing with the, with issues, uh, do you have any issues with your party?
None whatsoever. I arrived from the UK on um Sunday. Um, and I went straight to McKinney um to have a courtesy call with the chairman and leader of our party. Um, I saw him on Monday, I saw my national secretary general on Tuesday. Um, I am actively involved in the party that I represent. I am proud of the party I represent, I'm proud of its grassroots um philosophy. And I'm really very, very keen to, along with so many other people, um, continue to use every opportunity we have to ensure that that philosophy of giving the best to all. You know, ensuring that the person at the bottom has chances, ensuring that there's development and there's, there's, you know, improvement in infrastructure. Um, yeah, no, I have no problems with my party whatsoever.
So, so how do you feel, um, elections are coming out, you know, how do you feel very enthusiastic? You, you know, with all of these challenges and plenty, plenty. Is it because you're a woman, the, the female thing comes into playback? Because we get this thing, woman offer talk to me, so woman offer send me, so. I mean, do you think that's your gender also, uh, uh, play a role into your, your, the part of your challenges in the council? And also you feel enthusiastic for go again, uh, uh, another time, they free to give you another chance again?
I mean, my gender definitely play a role. I think say any woman, we don't do in leadership. Um, I remember, I, I can always say this, during the campaign, there were two questions wait and he asked me constantly. And um, one of them was, what you go do in your first hundred days? And I always said, I go plan, and that's exactly what I did. The other question when they asked me constantly was, you know, you feel say this now role where you able do as a woman? And at that, for that question, I'd be always telling say, like, I don't understand. I've been a woman all my life, it's never been an issue. I'm one, I'm one of four girls, you know, I was raised to know, not only just to believe, but to know that anything a man can do, a woman can do, because me, my mom, my papa not treats me none differently to anybody and we achieve and make them proud. But I have to say that this experience, don't make I realize say, I might not see myself as different. But there are many who do. Many sadly, men and women do sometimes have a challenge. Um, it, it's almost like an unconscious bias against feminine leadership. But that's just power for the cause, right? That also something for puts me off, because when you see a challenge like that and then you realize how, how detrimental it is, what it costs us in the long run. Because why would you not embrace leadership which is strong, focused and directed simply because of the gender? So for me, I think within the way I like for look, um, this has been a growth opportunity, not just for me, but for those where they interact with me. So let we also let other people then see, and I, I, I know men, we don't change their perception, you know, just through the experience, you know, just seeing that, okay, wow, so she's a woman, but she can still get this stuff done. Right? So great. So let's stop being focused on her being a woman. And then you also get in mind the wicked talk, talk to you, like for say, you know, to woman. Like I've been get one situation of office one day, this guy came, staff, in fact, there are three men. Can lay bit of it to complain, um, but, but about a colleague, a female colleague, now you guys say, me Westman, he talks to me, so I was like, excuse me, she was careful do this, she's not your wife, she's your colleague. You just don't care, you case.
And now, so gender, gender is a big issue, but like, like you said, um, seeing the way, what you do and how we do one, go able hopefully change the perception that um regardless if you're now a woman, as long as you get the job done. That's, that's what we want to see at the end of the day, whether you're not a woman, whether you're not a man. Let we take away that, that gender business as long as the work or the job is done. So, um, I mean, you, you've been an in inspiration to so many women and you don't set that pace and standard say, uh, when women are given the opportunity to lead, they can get the job done, honestly. So, uh, uh, how you want, uh, how you, do you want Fritonians to give you another second chance and why?
So the work of transforming Free Town definitely not only completed. Um, and it's a, it's a, it's a work in progress. Um, I think from the conversation we talk about, where we get today, perhaps the most um concerning issue. Now, you know, we've made light of it, you know, I've, I've laughed, but, you know, being in a position where you actually get, there's a, there's, there is a possibility, not more than a possibility. There's an actuality of work that has been done, investments that have been made, infrastructure that's been put in place, systems that have been built, processes that have been established for gain a position where we do watch a decision-making way, allow somebody for say, no. Just like that. Um, in, in a government, in a governance structure, we, we have a supervising ministry. You know, there, there are processes of redress, should be processes of redress. So I, I would probably say that, I, I would say this, I would say that the journey to transform Free Town is well underway, it's facing some challenges, it needs to be allowed to continue. That's where I'm gonna leave it.
Okay, well, we get people in, now the, you know, now the town hall, the virtual town hall, we want for ask you question or we want for talk to you or concern. Um, we, this not the time for make yourself listen and, and see what in the same therefore tell you. Because that's all, um, this whole program is about engaging, you know, so there's a form for engage you. Uh, even though some of them are on in the diaspora, but they know what they go on as alone, especially Free Town. And they've been following your activity, they've been following what you're doing. So they know a lot and sometimes they want for show, they ask, show concern or ask a question. I will start with, uh, Mister Boy Jallo Jamboree. Um, let me just make it quick, um, because, uh, we not get much time. No, just make it quick for the mayor, lady mayor said we forget respond. Mister Jallo Jamboree, can you please unmute or let me, let me ask you to unmute? Okay. Go ahead.
Thank you very much. I was wishing I would come last, because I'm going to ask very technical questions.
That's okay.
I have been a councillor before of the Free Town City Council. And I've been a councillor in my municipality now with twice, twenty eleven up to twenty eighteen. Um, I would not ask you my questions, I would ask you them in camera later. What I see, and I'm saying it as a piece of advice. You have two challenges in the council. You have an institutional trust challenge, challenge. And then you have a greater challenge of your legitimacy. But thank God, congratulations, you've done so well. Because you have a very good performance legitimacy. The only thing I would want to ask is, according to the, the, the act, the local government's act, the chief administrator is to be appointed by the council on consultation with a commission, which is defined in the, in the law itself. And nothing has been stated about the composition of the, the commission. My question is, was the chief administrator appointed by that procedure? Then he's illegal.
Thank you very much, um, um, mayor go, uh, answer that question.
Talk to you later.
Okay, mayor, okay, uh, Madam Mayor.
Okay, so, um, you know, um, um, Mister Jello Jamboree, Sontem, you aware say, from about two thousand and eight, a practice be, began to happen in the councils where instead of the, um, the chief administrators and other core staff being appointed or, or, yeah, um, recruited in their local councils through the process where you just described. And by the way, there are now human resource guidelines where they tell the composition of that commission. Um, but what you mean happen is they were being transferred from one council to another by the local government ministry, the local government service commission. So this, this C A was actually not a C A. This C A was a finance officer recruited, I believe in Koidoo, um, back in early two thousands and then worked in Moyamba Tonko Lily, Postloco. And then, um, just actually came as an acting C A to council. So that's also part of the challenge, so, um, to FCC that is. Part of the challenge is that he actually doesn't have chief administrator experience of any length. And then you're then doing it in the most complex and complicated of all the councils. Um, so that, that's my answer. So he was not, he was not appointed, he was transferred to FCC.
All right, um, for the benefits, um, for the one that really listeners, we salon people there, while we talk we own local language. So that they say we for understand some of the technical question, yeah, and let them know how uh, uh, the council they run, because these are very technical question, the way people are not understand. And now they're, I, I didn't even know. So now we said don't understand, what's the problem there? So, um, the next person, um, I see Gifty, Gifty, what's in a question to the mayor? No, make a brief.
Um, hmm, Mayo. Well, Mayo analysis is very simple because from all what you don't see, um, I don't feel, I feel see. You get three challenges, that we the face right now, with that's nice, Tom being block for make you, you go more and more forward. And these challenges are one, decision-making challenges. No get rights for make the decision where you want for bring progress in your office, in your, your role. And then two financial challenges, you not get the enough finance for make you do what you for do for improve your city. And then gender challenges. So now my question is, what's in, how strong is your security as a mayor? Because we don't see how they be don't back panel beat you before, you be don't get so many confrontations all this past years, we be don't see. So from that same day to now, how strong is your security? And then what will be your advice for the woman them, where one come take position like a you position or we want go further, we want go into parliament? How, how you feel say you go able for advise them for make it and get prepared for take, for face and challenges, that's some it's a question I get for you.
Okay, thank you very much, Gifty. So the security question, I think by virtue of security, that team was enough to talk about in public. So just to say that I'm very conscious of them, but I know good things, I go say more than that. Um, and then the second one about women, oh, yes, please. Um, i- if there's something where I don't become more and more passionate about, now more women in governance. I mean, I, I, I really, really encourage any woman where feels say, this is something where you get a passion for or, uh, you interested in, please, please, please do go for it. Um, the difference way I see woman and he make, you know, where women are find themselves in position. Of leadership or not, that women have really delivered. So I would say, yes, please go for it.
Okay, thank you very much. Um, over to, uh, make a good woman and chance a big scope, um, um, Dolly. Um, Dolly, yes, um, over to you, short, straight to the point, uh, we not get much time. Thank you so much. Go ahead.
Um, thank you, Rachel. And first of all, I must say thank you to we mayor. And you don't represent we well, and we very proud of you for all the trials we go through, with all the pressure what you gets. What's yet still you able for make them, for do what's he able for do. Me question what gets for you today and also I want for tell you as woman of Sagaliun, because we get problem over the years. Where like a me are always, they talk and say, we the women of Sagaliun, we not able for make platform for other women where they can be anyway. Because women and they weren't in a position, starting the position where they suppose for daddy, for able for encourage other women, for men and come near them, so that we are able for take the higher level. But the one that wanted before you wouldn't, you're the give we, that platform there at all. When they did it, and they always feel to say them better pass the other woman where they don't. So you as a mayor now, what would they look up to you, we don't see what you do. Would they beg you that you go able create that platform for other women then, forgive them the, the confidence that you don't did it, you go able create that platform, let other woman then come. So that we able encourage other woman them, let other woman not feel to say, whether you educate or you not educate, but something they agree before contribute for build the woman in a salon. Because we woman them, we go able for make salon, if all it would give we serve chance. And the other question I get for, what I for ask you is about the council. I'm not able to understand how we own council they work, like I mean now, I didn't in England. The house was I live, the council house, but I not know for me a born a salon. I just see people and they suffer, when they collect money, they collect revenues, collect all, you know, people in houses, they pay their revenues. But there is nothing where the council able make for let people then put them in a slum areas. Would they see the way they go, they go bank water, for make a make house, for live there. Well, we get, so I would say, council, what are you responsible for rehouse people them? But nothing over the years from a born in that country, where a born meets locals housing. And it's a big can they sell them, I don't ever see anything again for let the council able for make housing for people that were in a slum area like a bay, as far as me cause I'm there not to place for mortal man. And I believe say the council go able for make something, for me then create how, um, 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 local housing, what people that were able for pay, where go bring more revenue to the council and build with city, rather left the incident there, they slum there, they, they collect the revenue from them from their half of team there, where you know they make impacts in their life.
All right, thank you, thank you so much, Dolly. Thank you so much. Over to you, Mayo.
Okay, Tony, um, I will start first with you, point about women. Um, and just for tell you say, you do that team lead with them, they talk about, she's a woman. Um, a, a lot of me team, even me councillors, not that I pick my councillors, but almost fifty percent of my councillors are women. Um, in we policies where we do, you know, I've just come, I'm actually in Bo. Um, I can, I've been in Kenema, um, with an organization, we do work with widows because what they're doing is very similar to what we do, we've just provided in the last few months, um, farming opportunities for five hundred women. Um, we, we have a big women focus and work with market women, so empowering of women, whether we, we put nursery school for market women and picking them doing, uh, uh, um, tr- training with women. So I agree with you entirely, it really important for let women in leadership, focus on women and empower women. And that's why Mina, one of the co-founders, but there are five of us, including your mayor, Mayor Sadiqan of an organization called Change, we, um, they're all about gender equality in city councils. Now, your next point about, I, I love that statement, Dolly. I hear it all the time, when I collect all this money. I hear it all the time when I collect all this money. So local taxes, five thousand leons, the budget of council prior to now was about thirty two million. Um, thirty two, thirty two billion, is that billion? Yes, billion. Um. That's about three hundred and twenty thousand dollars, is that right? I think so. No, no, no. So it's not thirty two million, but the the equivalent, sorry, I've got my report right here. Let me just pull it up. I want the point, I don't see now. Oh, here it is. Right, here we go. So the revenue. There we go. The budget last year was seventy eight billion. Actual revenue was thirty three billion.
Leons.
Leons, all right. Um, the money where people then they talk, you collect all this money. That isn't enough money, thirty three billion leons is not enough money to house, to create any kind of housing development. You have seventy five informal settlements in Freetown. Over thirty five percent of the population, that's over three hundred and fifty thousand people to four hundred thousand people live informal settlements. The problem that you see, Dolly, is a problem that's built up over the years through a lack of development control and urban planning. So it's not possible. And the money that's collected is not going to do it. That doesn't mean we're not doing anything about it. We have identified five communities, Coletown, Kokobe, Moiba, Recupla and Coconut Farm. The three in the east, we do work on World Bank funding to upgrade those communities. The two in the west, Kokobe and Coletown, we've worked over the last two years. Because it's not just, just go move them. We've done studies, we've engaged the people, we've done soil studies. We've done engagements with the communities themselves about housing types. We've identified land, not random land that no one's going to want to live in because it's the middle of nowhere and you can't get there, you can't get jobs. But we've identified a relocation site. And we've actually now got two donors who hopefully two philanthropists, one a Buddhist organization, really far and wide, and the other one, an individual. We go enable we for begin for do this work. But I suppose what's waiting you need for, we all need for appreciate is that until we actually begin to to implement urban planning and a building permit regime where to bring some level of development control into the city. How and and then we also have a, we have this revenue being grown, not just at a level that sustained and sustainable. We can't do these things. But the good news is there's progress being made. And Dolly, I hope that in about, I would say eight months' time, you go able for see photos of something, something of substance being done, which is real. Lip service has been done a lot in respect of slum relocation, a lot. Slum relocation is not an easy concept. We work with the UN Habitat. I've spent time talking to um, people who work, who've worked in slum relocations in Jakarta, in in Malaysia, yeah, Malaysia, you know, it's it in South Africa. When it's done, where it's done successfully, it's not done as a knee jerk reaction. It's done as a very carefully planned collaborative and participatory exercise, working with the communities involved. And that's what we're seeking to do. So you may not be seeing anything yet, but we've been working on this for two years.
All right, thank you very much, Madam Mayo. Um, I guess one, another hand up, perspective um, over to you. And um, and I want anybody get, go on for ask question because we are getting to, you know, wrapping up. If not, um, the last person is going to be perspective. Go ahead. On mute.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity. Thank you, Mayo. Um, I'm always spend much time because of we are against time. And thank you for your service. Thank you for what you do for the people of Freetown. I mean, thank you very much. Okay, um, what do you mean I ask? I'm not saying we are against time. But I want some few take away, becoming a post we are believing, result giving for the ordinary masses, called the inner question, the book, what you may or don't do. I know say we don't do that a lot, but I make before this call end, you get eleven areas, the way you identify. Now two you sectors, then priority areas and two of those areas actually like you flagship. So what you want to make you do for me and for the people that we listen, for the benefit them, for the take away, so we not getting question there. And say what you may or don't do. So what you want me to do, just do all those four clusters. One is like environmental management, you give one example, one take away. And revenue mobilization, just give you one example, we'll make it take away. And under the um, the second cluster, we know education, maybe um, I would say um, job creation. Then at least under the other third cluster, we know health, maybe you do health and sanitation. So that probably give you six cluster just for time. So it would give you like one one example, each would be a take away for we and a lot of people already listen. All this photo talks, so that we go go now bed tonight, we say, hmm, this is one thing I remember that me don't do now, oh, just those six six um, areas and the other those levels and priority areas. I don't know if you do our meeting this time, just one one example each. Thank you.
Yeah, maybe.
Yes, yes. So um, under environmental management, we don't nobody tree planting. We don't construct over thousand meters drainage, we don't do flood mitigation activities. We don't do beautification at the city, we don't do mentoring for young women them. Um, we don't do climate action planning, we don't do training of community members them so that they self go able for be better equipped. So like when when it begin fall heavily, they know whose action for take, we get numbers and we get contact so that people can you know say, okay, this random begin can. So then then on the environmental management and you be say on a revenue, on the revenue, we don't do, of course, the property rate system, we not in the face, ninety lock so many loopholes. And it deface so many challenges as a consequence. But beyond that, we also don't pass a resolution for let twenty percent of the money we raise by every ward in every ward be used by the people within that ward, then they able for vote on how for use the money. We did, we do a pilot, call it the digital town halls. Sadly, because of this sabotage, the kind money where people can for able for the use now, we not don't get them. But I want for continue for encourage Freetonians, if we now encourage those you know to pay your property rate, you will use the money yourselves, you will make the decision on that set. Then under in education, we don't do, of course, the free preschool, the nurseries, now Congo Water Market. And now we about this coming week, we can open the one at Kuta Road Market. And by God in power, we also do one, now Black Tank, now Lomni. We do do school performance management and monitoring with the teachers. We don't provide furniture because the money where they come as families devolved, it very small. Then under job creation, well, the the key one where everybody can always talk about with me, I don't have a tire bottom, now the tricycles. Because if we don't provide work for over one thousand five hundred youth them, that is amazing. And then under the tree planting, back again, walk the commerce day, even under the nursery school, teachers and get forget walk. Everything we would do, it come back to the job creation. But another very exciting one, we do work with the city of Milan now because that Milan famous for fashion, we do work on a partnership between the city of Milan. And again, this is manager, the team lead. Because when you did do their meetings there, now they can't hear it come out of them. We did do a partnership now with the 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 fashion, we own designers. We see how we're able for make the access the Milan markets. So we do work on that and that they say for create jobs in the back. And then um, health, I don't already mention the funding where Rachel bring up, where I explained what you not mean. But we also just don't upgrade two P H U's, the one at Gray Bush and the one at Ross Road so that then we're able for accommodate Bella Woman. You want a gray bush, even it gets one, even get one um, and postnatal and anti post, postnatal bed. Now able for take five and we don't, we the the furnish them. Plus, we don't put water, we don't put ball hole, we don't do a a covering. Then the one at Ross Road, um, in a bin gets a, it been just getting the bed for the labor. Now it getting the labor bed as well as the postnatal. And then I guess a small surgical unit will be able for upgrade the, um, and then and we don't provide a hundred and thirty rainwater harvesting systems in communities, in P H U's, in markets. And we truck water right now and we also work with their communities, the markets, markets, they're not being get toilets. All we markets and get toilets now. So the marketing are not going for disgrace. The only source that we not get toilet, the abacha, because we not be able fence side. You know, but there's going to be relocation of abacha in due course. And then we're also just about to start uh, um, the construction of forty rainwater, no, forty water kiosks. Um, we the connected to water system so that you get more water provision in in former communities as well as additional fifteen public toilets. So those are some takeaways. Not to all tip.
Thank you very much. Madam Mayo, you know, I think say you don't able for establish why Freetonians then put you there and you don't able for tell Freetonians and say, I don't work for now, so now say forget for next election. So anyway, um, when we talk about politics, small, you know, before we wrap up, you know, because this program, a woman in politics, you cannot, you are a politician now, technically. So let's talk about politics, especially our woman if we come inside politics. We know say, um, uh, what the APC party also don't give opportunity to woman especially like a you for lead and believe in you, um, as woman say, woman for also give an opportunity for lead and for serve. So um, moving forward and coming into the 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 next election pretty soon, what do you want for see in in your party? How you think say, what you want for see the party in terms of women leadership? In terms of party politics, getting women engaged and getting women for their leadership position? Not just the women's wing and all of that, but women to come forward in this political, in your political party and say, me self want for contest for this position. What's in your expectation or what you want make your political party do, the APC party that you are part of to encourage women to lead in the party politics?
Well, I mean, I like what you say, Rachel. Um, it important for let woman them able for be mainstreamed. Um, we we get, we get Women's Congress, yes. But that not means say woman not for aspire for any of the national positions. They're not for means say woman not for aspire for any of the regional positions. And we say I would like for see now a growing recognition, say, if not woman then he votes for the APC. Let woman then, let it voters that they see more of the faces where fibber them. Because their faces then they not go know what's in the need for do, for meet the needs of woman. You win a woman, now you were able, where where do you think about picking the market, nursery school in the market? Now because we are comra, now because when I the worker through me campaign, I see picking any play on that table. Sometimes a man might not have noticed that, but me notice them and they like today, I don't do something but them. So as a woman, there's something we can bring and it really important for let women be given that space so that there is more service delivery, more effective, more effective service delivery, more rounded service delivery. Studies that don't show say even when people that he do prototypes um, of of um, products. When you get women to test them and versus you get man to test them. If the one we tested by woman, it'd be usually a better product. Because you might see all that, so it's in a way man then obviously. So I would definitely be looking to have the APC party continue. I mean, I I I am from the APC party and I am the mayor of Freetown. So that in itself has said that the APC party gives space to women. But we want for see that continue and we want for see more. And we certainly at the party level, we want for see women, um, more women in all positions. Not just as chair ladies, not just as congress leaders, women congress leaders, but in all positions. Position on they win Mac Man only.
So um, um, let me just put you on the support here or try to just clear this on. Will you want to see a political, APC political party that will have a woman as vice president?
I'd like to see an APC political party that is going to win in twenty twenty three, whatever that means.
So my question, my answer was not direct, but I take it, I take it, I take on the way where you, what where you put up. But I mean, with all what you've said today, um, talking about you want for see more from from the APC party encouraging women, don't show, she'll say, yes, my answer is yes. I take it as yes. I take it as yes. So um, having said all of this, um, I see a hand. Oh, okay, I thought it was a hand. Anyway, with the wrap up now, Madam Mayo. Your final for today, you know, it's very interesting. Town town hall meeting with your people here. And what you want for left with salon people then, especially you people that we call you for serve. We elect you, we are Freetonians, what you want for tell them today, what you want for left with everybody today?
Um, I want to say thank you again to Oman for the support, the encouragement, um, the prayers. You know, I I I feel so uplifted in Freetown. Um, because people then so committed to us working on this together and having the change. I want to say we all get a role and a responsibility. And we all can play, we own part for transform Freetown. I would probably say I'm for about the fifth time tonight, but I will say I'm because you know, we need to actually have resources in order for us to continue to work. So if you don't pay your property rate and you know your neighbor, we're not paying your needs, make sure they do that. Let's have a flood of res-
Okay, I think so we get on hitch. Yeah. With the mayor in final word for today, we to get some. Unfortunately. The mayor want for talk to in people in our Freetown, unfortunately, um. Technicality don't embark this, but I I believe say she's trying to get on board, um. She's trying to get on board this one because we cannot go without her talking to to us on leaving something with us, you know, before it go. But um, why would I try for get the mayor, I want for say thank you. Um, let me look quickly um, at the comment section. Yeah, there's a lot of conversation going on at the comment section. And I just want for read small, you know, not to all, I see, um. Alasanne say you answer the question, Mayo, want to see more women face faces, faces for political position. And Alima to, Alima to say, but choose wisely, some women sadly are gatekeepers. Uh, drivers for Patrick, Patrick and I mean, so good. Okay, absolutely. And Janet said the mayor work with uh, work, work will speak, okay, the mayor work will speak for itself come election time. Absolutely. And um. Alex say thanks, Madam Mayo. And I see some seen, any animal Thompson say make the electoral committee give us for a members them the opportunity for vote during twenty twenty three election. Well, now this we all be fat for, let we see what's in it for happen um, in the near future. Um, I also get message, message here. Jobson I say gender sensitive, I think say, we talk about this gender thing, Maricante say, um. Good work with beautiful Mayo, um. Alima say many successful completion, um, Jobson I say many success stories. So um, Pfizer talker say I trust, believe and you know will, I I trust, believe and know you will transform Freetown if you were was given a chance, but eh, but Billy, okay, I will not go to that. Um, Janet say our mayor is building a blueprint for the future. All right, Binti Casey Mayo, you've done us proud. Thank you so much and keep up the good work. Balagu Keru says Saralian will never prosper, never prosper because all the parties, APC, SLBP, they are all corrupt anyway. Um, Ali say if M D S are decentralized, that will also help decongest the city for proper planning. Okay, and and um, AG say government would do great development plans because they need something to campaign for for the people. Anyway. Jobson I say your evidence based policy making and statistics are gold standard. I rest my case. Okay, Cherryberry say a lot of comments here while we are waiting for the mayor because I, we- I, we need to, I mean, at least here, um, a final word, but let's see how it goes. I also have Cherry Barry say, it can be done, but government do want to have it done. And, um, Nancy say the council, now salon not get a system like, okay, like England, don't understand why we cannot develop such system, it can be done, folks. All right, I just did read two more question, um, and I'm, I'm, I'm done. Okay, Isra say rounds, round square peg in round holes. Okay, we know what you that mean. Nelson said, Sierra Leone, women are smart, they affluent and they can think wisely more than pop, more than we pop had it. All right, that's a good one. One question, and we will wrap up, we will wrap up. Thank you, Mayor, and Nelson say, women are the only people that can change the country, mark my words. Okay, that is up for debate as well. So, um, there's an issue technically with the mayor, it just send me a message unfortunately. And because it didn't abode currently, you know, I mean, duty calls. So at this juncture, I want to say thank you to me viewers them. Thank you to my people on the town hall, on the virtual town hall, I really, really thank them all for being part of this and for taking our time out of our business schedule for can listen to developments, for can listen to what in they happen at salon and see how we safely make with inputs, um, so much, I really, really appreciate you on the virtual, uh, meeting today, and on to my, my viewers. Um, kudos to now, you guys keep the conversation, I don't keep the conversation going. And you've shared, you've liked, you've said, make so many comments here that I couldn't read all of them. But I really appreciate your comments, your thoughts and suggestion, and I thank you for the women that we come out today for listening to our fellow women, because normally it's hard for me, they can say, woman, I need to support woman, but we are changing the dynamics. I mean, we are moving on, women will support women regardless of which political party, we will support each other. So once again, I want to thank you all, um, um. A lot of people here, I wish I can see your faces, Beatrice, Alfred, Josephine, on the, on the Zoom virtual, um, town hall. Mary, Jensen, um, Belinda, I can see a lot of you, Spencer, a lot of you are here, Anis. Um, Mara, perspect- perspective cope, there's cope, of course, you don't ask me, or technical question, where people really go take as a take home today. Um, who else? I have world stage, I have, um, Calvin, Alice. I'm just recognize you here quickly, I'm sorry if I don't, if I can't say all of the names here. But while we are able mention, I will say I'm before the end of the program, I have Josephine, thank you, Josephine. Thank you, Vicky, thank you, Rita, thank you, Rosaline, um, Ice Karma, thank you, Fredlin, thank you so much. FDA, Macamac, thank you so much, Josephine Buck, thank you, Victor, Mustafa Nima, I want to say thank you to everybody, Anis. Um, Alfred Thomas, Walter, Wartina Spencer, thank you so much, I cannot name all of it here. Um, you guys have been so awesome on the, the, um, town hall today, and I thank you for all of your contribution. And look forward to a more, we, I'd come up again, let me just make it clear, I'm coming, coming up with, uh, Sierra Leone Women and Politics Leadership Conference very, very soon, so watch out on my page. There's going to be, um, keynote speakers from, um, from all walks of life, where from woman they wait on Timap, Tangan and Salon. For woman they wait on actively involve or don't click, create a blueprint, now the politics of salon. All of the woman here, so they come together, we to get a virtual conference for Sierra Leone Women and Politics Leadership Conference. For see how go before position salon woman them in terms of leadership now salon. So, uh, now this I want for left on our with today, and thank you, and stay blessed, and make Lord bless, bless Sierra Leone. Thank you. My name is Rachel Bangura Davis, and I have been your host for today's program on women and politics. Thank you, Gifty, you've been awesome. Thank you so much, I appreciate you. Mister Mohammed Boy Jalo Jamboria, thank you, you've been awesome. Fatima, thank you, everybody. Karina, God bless you. Goodbye.